Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday, March 25th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Would you please rise for a flag? Would the General Counsel please call Laurel?
Yes, good evening, President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Vonryd?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Stroger?
Here.
And our student representatives, Nathan Essner?
Here.
And Jasmine Pearson. We have a forum.
Thank you. Item number four, adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Rankos Pharmacy, Liz Rankos.
Is Amanda or Dan? Is Liz here? Madam President, if we may, can we just either wait to see if Liz shows up, or we can reschedule Liz?
Yeah, we'll move on to item number six and come back to it if she's here. Item number six, superintendent's report, six point one, COVID-19 updates.
I asked Dr. Garcia to give our COVID-19 update.
Tom, I think we have the other presentation that we're gonna go for.
Alright, good evening ladies and gentlemen, so tonight is March 25th and this is our regularly scheduled COVID update. Just wanna remind a few folks that these are the safety precautions that we continue to follow, which include our Department of Health guidance, and a reminder for all of us to continue to mask up, our family app for attestation and opportunities, and please, we're just continually reminding folks as community transmission is still alive with us, to stay home if you don't feel well. And then check with your school's information on any dates and cohorts that's, as you have questions. So here's our current status, currently we have pre-K currently in cohorts, kindergartners, grades one and two, four days a week. And then we are now with grades three, four, five, six, seven, nine and twelve, excuse me, nine and twelve are all in cohorts, not in grade eight yet. And here's what's coming next. This coming Monday, March 29th, our eighth graders will join us on campus, 10th graders and 11th graders who will all be joining us two days a week. Just wanna remind some folks of some other updates, we continue to explore COVID testing opportunities and vaccinations. We have a number of qualified vaccination staff clinics, and we've been working with our community partners as well to offer them opportunities. We have voluntary staff COVID testing available. Some spring activities for all of us to remind, TOL registration for the 2021 and 2022 year is continuing, and we've had a great initial turnout for that. High school sports season, registration, and they're actually getting into gear to start. Our graduation planning continues forward, and we're expecting some further guidance for the facility at the Tacoma Dome in mid-April. And so we are continuing to work with the Tacoma Dome and the State Department on that. Grades three through 12 remain in cohorts. Some grade levels may need to offer an additional opportunity on campus to meet the 30% requirement, so we're currently working with the state in some of our grade levels to make sure that students who choose have access for onsite opportunities. And then we're working in collaboration with our different staff members to get ideas on what should that look like for those students that choose to access that. As folks may know, the governor made a decision today, an announcement, to offer for those school districts that choose to, to move to a three-foot versus six-foot. That guidance is not as just as simple as three feet to six feet. And so the Department of Health put out some guidance today, I believe it was around 20 pages. This just happened this afternoon. So we have not had a chance to digest that. And I'll remind the Board of Directors that this is a local decision. It does not mean that we have to move to department, or excuse me, to three feet, we can maintain six feet. But by the summertime, it's my understanding from reading a little bit, we have to start summer or fall. So next fall, we can plan that that would be three feet in classroom spaces. And like I said, it's a little more nuanced than just a simple three feet or six feet. There are certain spaces that need to remain six feet, there's community transmission rates that may drive that, secondary versus elementary, so we'll come back to you with further information before we make any final recommendations. We are planning for both in-person and remote learning opportunities this summer, and then also fall jumpstart activities. And that is our quick report tonight.
Thank you for the report, any questions or comments from the board?
No, I think Dr. Garcia, in terms of like trying to understand the new guidance, like I imagine in a similar way that with the Department of Labor, like there's just gonna be a lot of nuances in trying to understand and be able to operationalize the new guidance.
Yes, and like I said, we have not had a chance to fully digest what the State Department's, but then the Pierce County Health Department also has an opportunity to provide guidance on top of that. And so we certainly will not be implementing anything in the next day or so, we'll need some time. And then we will be bringing that back to you and seeing, there's all kinds of different implications that we would need to examine. What are our current agreements, if there's any implications of those current agreements? This, just the general feeling of the community, what does that mean? What would it mean for implementation timelines? What is the remaining time left in school? Remind folks, we have another week before we have spring break and we're in that final push. So there's all kinds of implications that we'll have to look at and examine.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions that I don't think we have concrete answers to, but I just wanna throw them out there at this stage. Related to graduation planning, I assume that you still have lots to figure out, but given that more people are getting vaccinated these days and transmission rates are what they are currently, I'd guess that right now, we'd know the minimum number of family members that students would be able to have at graduation. But do you have a sense of where that might land? Like do you expect that students might be able to invite two people, four people? Or is that all, is it all just too soon to tell?
It's all too soon to tell, and then to add a complexity of that, in mid-April, the state is supposed to examine what phases each county is in. And so it will also depend if we stay with the Tacoma Dome, that has different restrictions because it is an indoor venue versus an outdoor venue. What we have gotten some guidance to start with, that graduates don't count in that total number, so that's some good news that we are able to do that. But there is a lot of information still to digest. And we really have to wait till that mid-April to see if Pierce County stays in the same phase that it's in, or if it moves backwards, or if there's a new Phase Four that's accelerated, and so there's a lot of information. So what's most important is that we are planning an in-person graduation. We are going to work to safely allow as many family and friend members to attend as possible within that guidance.
Okay, and then separately, I know that freshmen or ninth grade students came back to school in the last week. Can you tell us a bit about any of the orientation activities that happened for ninth grade students? Just examples, I know it varies school to school, but how are the freshmen or ninth graders kind of onboarded into school? What did that look like?
If I may, I might put our student reps on the dais. If you have any specific examples? I think it's probably let the experts speak, right?
Thanks.
So I came back as a senior on Monday, and then on Thursday, the ninth graders joined the seniors. And at least at my school, we set out about two hours in the morning so that seniors and ninth graders could have time to talk and like take them around campus, and make sure that, because we have mentor group, we wanted to bond with them before we graduated and left. And so it also gave them more time with their teachers to kind of get to know them. So I think that schools are definitely trying their best to get ninth graders acquainted with being in-person in high school. And from what I've seen, a lot of ninth graders are talking with each other and like have gotten a lot closer than I remember being with other ninth graders when I was a freshman. And I think it's because they've been in such a weird place for so long. And so I think that having that time with seniors and having that time with themselves just as a ninth grade class has really helped.
Thanks Jasmine.
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of what she said, specifically at Wilson. What I saw was, we were encouraged to wear like Wilson gear, senior shirts, so that they could identify us and ask us for help in the hallways, and I saw that happening, I saw a couple of examples. You know, where's this classroom? It's probably a little bit easier to navigate Wilson's campus than Sammy's, but yeah. So just a lot of help from people going around, and I think that a lot of the ninth graders were able to settle in easier than usual, I think, because of that, so yeah.
Thanks.
There's some, I know schools have done videos and opportunities, and then they've had activities that even in the online setting, where there's whole glass time of trying to prepare students for what does that mean on campus. And then orientations also with students that have come on for sports, and now we're having some club activities and stuff as well.
Thank you, that's really helpful to hear, just the experience between the seniors and the ninth graders. Anecdotally, I was talking to a woman whose daughter is a kindergartner in Tacoma, and she was just saying how her daughter in particular felt so much more prepared to support her student who's a new kindergartner because they had the time at home where it was fully online, where the parent could see the interaction between student and teacher and kind of help coach their student. And then it was the two days in-person, and then stair stepping into the four days. So even though we had to institute that model because we were responding to a crisis, well, that kind of stair step structure, and I don't know that everybody had this experience, I'm sure that everyone did not, but the stair step that they experienced, plus this interaction between ninth and 12th graders, as we talked earlier about, not all of this is bad. There, it just seems like there are nuggets that are emerging that it'd be interesting to see if we can explore implementing or learning more about down the road. In addition, like talking to the Head Start Policy Council, they talked about those tablets and devices not being, not as useful. I don't remember if this came up in our board meeting, but that helping to facilitate the family engagement because the tablets were a communication tool. So as we keep moving forward, just don't wanna lose sight of potential positive things that have come out of this.
So that's, when we, when we talk about jumpstart activities, that's a lot of what schools are examining of, what can we learn? And how can we do things upfront online, and then really maximize that in-person time as well?
Sorry, my last question about COVID is more financial in nature. Do you all have a sense of when we'll know, what the financial implications of the SER III or the most recent recovery bill? What the implications are financially for Tacoma?
So we have an understanding of predict, or what the predicted money that would flow to Tacoma is. What we do not know is what are the implications for the state budget when that is identified. So it's a little bit premature for us to say, well, here's the money, because some of that money may come with obligations at the state level, and may be used to backfill other opportunities at the state level. So we're still not quite there yet with a solid number.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you for the update. Do we have our community partner, or no? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number six point two, and that is the capital projects update.
Thank you, just wanted to provide the public an update with our existing capital projects, as well as our upcoming capital projects. In addition, we'll have a high-level overview of our community inclusion goals. Just wanted to introduce Morris Aldrich, our Executive Director of Planning and Construction. Thank you.
Thank you, good evening everyone. As we go through this, part of what we wanna try and do again, as Chris was saying, is make sure that the projects that we've got currently ongoing, and then some of those that are coming up fairly soon this year, we wanna make sure that our board and our community was aware of where we stood at this particular point. So we'll start out at Downing Elementary, which of course the board members, we've approved that, GMP to move forward to that project. We've got the groundbreaking coming up on that on April 2nd. And we actually, I think hopefully by tomorrow afternoon, we'll actually close on the purchase of that building. It's, I know the superintendent's done a lot of signing over the last few days and trying to get that done. But we're moving out there, you can see there, we've got some community outreach dates, so that we can introduce the community to the project team. And what we try and do on all of our major projects like this, is make sure that folks that live in those areas understand the truck routes and the way the construction folks will be coming in and going out of the site. Because it's always gonna be disruptive, but we wanna make sure that we're consistent, everyone knows which way those trucks are, so that they can also contact us if someone is not where they're supposed to be. So it'll cover every aspect of how they interact in with the community there. Skyline Elementary, of course, we've got that groundbreaking tomorrow. Construction on that will begin April 1st. Community outreach meeting for that is on April 13th. And again, the same basic thing that we'll be doing there with Downing as well. Hunt Middle School, if you've had a chance to drive past that site, we're at 60% completion. A lot of interior paint work has already been done. They're starting to work on that exterior, but of course the rain has slowed some of that down, especially in the fields on the backside of it. If you're, if you go to Popeyes at all, you'll notice one time there was a lake behind the school. There was so much water that was sitting up there. They just actually started this week on drilling infusion wells. So we're actually, with infusion wells, we're actually drilling down into the ground so that that water gets treated above ground, and then actually goes down into the soil, and then percolates out into the sound. It's the first campus that we've actually done that way. It keeps us from having to store larger volumes of water on-site. Because with a site like that, I think they estimate that's like 40 to 50 million gallons of water fall on the site. So we wanna make sure that we're being good stewards as well as we move forward with this. So you can see with the drainage upgrades, we're also working on some of the street improvements. We're coordinating with the city on, it's not Passalt, I can't think of the name of the street right now, where they're gonna do half of it and we're gonna do half, over by the apartment complex. So we're working with them on that. And you can see there from a mechanical standpoint, electrical, most of those things are completed as well. And of course, that campus will open this fall. We've been working with the new administrative team, they've been in that building a couple of different times as we look at the various things that are going to make sure that that's a smooth transition moving into that facility. Fawcett Elementary School, we, of course, the board approved us hiring Hensel Phelps and BLRB to do that replacement campus. We will move the Fawcett students and staff to McKinley, and this will be the first time we'll actually have them own that swing site for two years. We're trying to avoid moving students during the middle of the school year. Academically, it's just not a good sound policy to move them. It can be done, it's disruptive, from a teaching standpoint, if someone actually had to change classrooms while I was teaching high school science, it's always disruptive when you move. Even more disruptive when you're changing buildings. So we're gonna try and make sure that's eliminated. As you can see, we'll make sure the students will have transportation, will be provided for all students that would like it. And then the demolition of that building would actually start in the fall, so that we can get that site cleared, and gives us enough time to make sure we've got a good, smooth transition there. I'm also happy to say that Tacoma Public Schools is the first district in the state of Washington that has received the agency certification for design-build. Design-build is an alternative delivery method, which typically, well, by law, you have to actually go to the state's project review committee every time in order to get approval. Because of our success in design-build, you do have the option to go and ask for agency certification. We went in January, and we are approved for that. We're the only public school, and there are only two other schools in the state of Washington, and that is UW and Washington State. And in doing design-builds, as we've seen in a lot of our projects, we talk about cost savings, but we talk about cost certainty. And if you'll notice that on Bose Elementary School, we've had zero change orders. That project will close out fairly soon with zero change orders. So far on Hunt, we've had zero change orders. And that occurs because we're able to actually work with the contractor, contractor and architect are working together. So our price certainty is better upfront than it is anywhere else along the way. And in fact, if you look at Bose, we did not have the artificial turf as part of that contract. And actually, thanks to COVID, we were able to do that, because we were able to get rid of the building sooner, which meant we were able to save some fees on the backend. So we're able to put that in because of, actually because of COVID-19. So when you start looking at it, it's a win-win, I think, both for our students and staff, and for our taxpayers as well. We're also, right now, we're going out, and this has already been published, looking at our first group of schools for our Safety and Security, RFP. We'll be coming back to the board in about roughly 90 days with a recommendation of who we move forward with there. The schools are grouped based on the plan that our Safety and Security Department has. We then, we will take that first group and get those done, and then start working on the next. And one of the things I would like to say is that we don't, we're not doing all of them at one time, because we still have to manage and oversee these projects. And the last thing we wanted to do is have 57 things going on around the city, and not making sure that they're done correctly. So the listing that's there was done, again, by our Safety and Security in a way that he believes that it's the most prudent way for us to move forward when we're looking at those schools. So the intrusion detection that we're currently have will be updated across the district, access control, intercom system vestibules, and CCTV. All of those systems will be upgraded in our older buildings, and in our newer buildings, of course, there'd be maybe some minor things that may occur when it comes to vestibules. We've also got this bundle that's on our agenda for tonight for later approval. We've got, looking at, we've got Lincoln High School on the upper field, where we're looking at adding baseball, softball, and tennis courts up there. If you have been on those facilities, you realize, well, today it's a swamp, where they're trying to practice baseball and softball. If you're down in the Lincoln Bowl, you realize that there are some things there that need to be improved. I can't tell you that we're actually gonna be able to touch everything on the bowl that needs to, depending on how our dollars go, but we've got significant dollars there. At Mason Middle School, replacing the, well, actually, replacing the turf there, and then fixing their running track, which is, a cinder track right now is actually too short, but it will, it will actually be a competition track by the time we're done. Replacing the tennis courts at Brown's Point that we took out. At Stadium High School, for Stadium High School, I should say. Baseball and softball, because they do not, also do not have a baseball and softball field. Those fields will be placed at Stanley. And when we do that at Stanley, we're also gonna improve the elementary playground area to make sure that they have some play area that's just outside of the field, that area is large enough for us to be able to do that. So they'll have an artificial turf area for them to play on, and when they have a spill over, they can also go out onto those fields as well. And then at Geadrone, putting in artificial turf there, and putting in an all-weather track at that particular site. And then over at Madison and Macarver, this is like a head start upgrade, was what we've got in those two buildings, Macarver Primary, I'm sorry. Both of the, both of these buildings, if you've been in, know that we've got some work that needs to be done. On Madison in particular, we're gonna paint the exterior, fix the roof, fix the round building so that we've got a good roof area there, improve that playground, remove the portables on the backside of that so that that's open to the community, so they can use that playground area. You may not realize, but those, elementary students in those neighborhoods actually go to school at Jenny Reed, which is significant, when you start looking at where, if they wanna play after school, it's a long way from where they live. So this actually will work in helping them as well, because we are gonna put both playground systems there as if it were a regular elementary school, not just the Head Starts Center. And at Macarver, working in the classrooms and doing some work there as well as going into that gym. On our heating and cooling and ventilation side, one of the things I wanna make sure that we assure you is that we are up to code and up to standard on everything that is required. We are however, looking at the recommendations that have come down from various groups to see where we can improve, so we're actually hired an outside consultant to see how much can we do with the dollars we've got, to make sure we're improving in every area we can. And investing in the community, part of what this board passed in 2016 was the inclusion plan to try and increase the dollars that we're spending, one, within Tacoma, two, within our minority and women-owned business community. And you can see there with what we've done on both Hunt, Bose, Bernie, and Grant, is that we have exceeded those goals in every area but one. And that is, right now is on the women-owned side, and we're currently working with the city and other groups to try and find and help develop those programs as we go. But if you look at, for instance, under the minority business participation, at Hunt, right now, we're still only at 14.7%, we're at 29% on Bose, 15% at Bernie, 25% at Grant. But what I really wanna focus on is, when you start looking at what we've spent locally, 93% at Hunt, 82% at Bose, we're at 48% at Bernie, and 87% at Grant. So on average, we're well above 60%. We wanna continue, not only with our major capital projects in doing that, but also in some of our smaller projects. So our team right now, when we go out and we're looking for vendors, we first look in Tacoma, then we go into Pierce County, and then we go outside of that if we don't. And in case, there are some specialties that are always gonna be outside, because they're not headquartered in Pierce County. But our goal, as we told the taxpayers when we went out, is to engage as many contractors within Pierce County and within Tacoma in particular, as often as we possibly can. And that's where I think the vote is there. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I just wanna say, thank you so much, Morris, to you and the whole team. And I think it's so impressive when we keep hearing about the design-build model and how it really has changed the way we have monitored and the fiduciary responsibility we have over those bond funds. And I really appreciate the hard work your team's done to continue to keep that, you know, really, so we know what we're spending it on and we're keeping within our budget. And also great work on all the schools that are, I've been going by some of them and seeing what's been going on, and it's exciting for the communities to see their community schools being attended to, so thank you.
Thank you. Director Keating, did you have a question?
Just, I had one question about Stadium, and thank you for answering that, it's gonna, the ball fields are gonna be on. Stanley, and it makes me think about traffic and considerations for traffic in that area, because if I remember right, Stanley, like you can't access Stanley on Sprague, it's a residential.
It's residential street there.
So I'm just curious about what considerations have been made for, just the traffic pattern, since it's in a residential area?
Part of what we have to do is, is we plan these projects, is working with the city, and they really tell us what we have to do when we're putting, when we're actually changing what's happening on the site. So over at Stanley in particular, we know that we're gonna have to improve parking, so we'll add additional parking to that site. As we look at the, those side streets that come off, we'll have to improve at least one of those, possibly two. One for sure, and that's the one that would be on the north side, that one we will have to improve. The one on the south side, we've got some minor things we'll have to do there. There's still, we're still in conversation with them, if we'll have to actually add a pedestrian light going across 19th, if I'm not mistaken, right there. Because if you think about where that, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the street.
I can see it, I know where you're at.
But so we've got some crossing and things that are there, so we're working with them. And there's a, I'd say there's very good possibility that we're gonna have to put something in there. But as far as the street in front of Stanley, there hasn't been anything proposed by the city as far as what they've recommended that we do. But we try and, we, I shouldn't say try, because we have to. We do everything that the city tells us we need to do in order to work on those traffic patterns.
Thank you, and my just other follow-up to that, is I get to serve on the Traffic and Safety Committee, and so I've seen some of these conversations, specifically the partnership with the city around the new construction, and it's been really impressive to see how, you know, like this, just like the collaboration and intention between, you know, the city and the district, it's just really impressive, so thank you.
Any other questions? Director Leon?
I think the community is real thankful for specifically also the safety and security upgrades that you're making, and have made throughout the schools. You mentioned the Phase 1 schools that are on the list. Some schools already have full security in place, and then you just tell, is Phase 1 the beginning, and then how many phases are there, two and three, what's finished?
Three at three at the most. It all depends on how fast this can go and what that turnover is. Another reason we're doing a design build because because these are existing facilities, you've actually got to go in and do some investigation into those buildings to see where you can put doors, where you may need to take down walls so that we're actually changing those flows. So some are very easy, and I would hate to give you a timeline right now until we actually get the team in place and they've had a chance to go in and look at those facilities.
So it's unable to give a timeline for when, a rough timeline even for when all the schools might have the basic.
We're hoping no more than two and a half years.
Okay. Thank you.
Morris, just a follow-up on that question about safety and security. When we were having conversations about upgrades that were needed across the district, one of the things that the board put forward is that we really didn't, we want schools to be safe and secure, but we don't want them to be hardened and to feel like maximum security institutions. So is the model that you have at Grant an example, like what Grant feels like and the grant entry, the model that we will likely be implementing across?
Yeah, that model, if you look at that, look at Grant, look at Bo's, look at Bernie, all of those, it's, again, it's where you're invited in, but you can only go to a certain point until someone opens the door for you. Because we don't want folks walking in and believing that they're in a box and they can't really see what's going on if someone's watching them. We want them to feel welcome with everything that we do. So we do that not only with our vestibule and making sure that, but they can see people and people, folks can see them, but we're putting our, even our cameras strategically so you don't think you're being watched every second of the day. You know, we're making sure that, yes, we're checking out your cars in the parking lot, making sure those areas are safe, looking at our entrances, but you're not going to see a camera, you know, every 20, every 25, 30 feet going down the hallway, for instance. You know, we want to make sure our students and staff still have their privacy, but we're also looking at just really doing our base safety needs for those folks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just real quickly, Madam President, in regards to the inclusion goals, it's important for us to, we didn't develop those goals in isolation. We worked with a number of partners, the trades, Mr. Mark Martinez, members of the community, Grover Johnson, Laoco Sim, and the city of Tacoma. So as folks are seeing those, they're pretty unprecedented, and we weren't able to find a public school system that set inclusion goals. And so Morris, Alicia Lavre, the team, there's quite a few extensive folks from Purchasing have done a number of outreach to help us, but I just want to make sure that folks understand that we weren't doing that in isolation. We were doing that in partnership, learning from Sound Transit and a variety of other agencies that have tried to do this work too. So it's definitely a spotlight, and I hope that the community sees that we're wanting to invest back into the community.
Thanks, I appreciate you pointing that out. I think we get so used to the partnerships and the way that we work that we don't always call things out that aren't typical, so I think that's a really good point. Speaking of that, as you were moving through the slides and just noting the places where improvements were going to be, it stood out to me like the SODA, SODA has different locations, but one of the locations is SODA slash Ted Brown. And I just remember being a kid, getting my little clarinet from Ted Brown, and I have that association, but just the reference to SODA Ted Brown has signaled that there's a partnership with Ted Brown of some kind. And so I just call it out here because it occurred to me, but it's so subtle in, like, everything that we're doing, like we talk about partnerships and we see a lot of them, but it just really is neat to see that be embedded, even in your previous updates about the improvements that will be happening and the partnerships between the Boys and Girls Club and their facilities and ours. So thank you for like leaning into that and even in our Building and Construction Department too, so appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, Members of the Public wishing to address the Board. No alternate protocols. We've been implementing several different protocols as we've moved through different meeting modes, but the school board members encourage public participation, your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to comments directly during the meeting, but the superintendent or designated will follow up with you if need be after the meeting. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tocoma.k12.wa.us. We have two options for you to participate in public comment. One is in person, and I think we have a few speakers here tonight. Then you can also send written comment that we will attach to the board agendas. So Superintendent Santorno, will you please call the speakers? Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak, and you should get a warning when you have one minute left.
I will. First speaker is Tom Pearson regarding the superintendent replacement process.
Well, thank you, President Cobb, members of the school board. I'm Tom Pearson, I'm president and CEO for the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber. And I just want to take us back, and so I'm speaking on behalf of the superintendent hiring process, and I want to take us back 10 years ago. 10 years ago, when businesses came to us and said, where should we play our business? Of course, we always said Tacoma, Tacoma is the place to do business, but where do we want to put our schools? We didn't always say it was Tacoma. If we could move forward now with the leadership of our superintendent, Carlos Santorno, now we say, and we know the work that you've done, the work the leadership's done, this is the place to put your students, this is the place you want to locate your residents, and this is the place you want to do business. And it's because of leadership, the direction that this body, board, leadership, everybody's worked behind so hard in the past 10 years during her leadership, and we are nationally recognized. I mean, the president was talking about some of the partnerships that we just inherently know about, and we work so well together. Those are the things that we all do together here in Tacoma and for the Tacoma Public Schools. Without the schools, it's really a heartbeat, and with a weak heart, somebody with medical, I know, but with weak heart, it doesn't work. Our community doesn't work. And so what I would say is that we want to continue the leadership, the direction that we're going. If we want to talk about strategic plan with COVID, some other things, that's a separate path, but I would encourage you to move forward with hiring your deputy, Dr. Garcia, Josh Garcia. I've known Josh for probably about 20 years, through not this district, but through another district, and I can tell you, leadership matters. And, and leadership matters for our community at this time and in this facility and in our schools. And so I can't speak more highly for one individual than Josh. Josh is a true leader, brings people together, he's focused on moving forward, and I trust Josh, you know, completely in terms of the work that he's done here and has, and its continuation of Carlos' work, moving us forward, moving Tacoma forward, moving our community forward. So thank you for your time, and I just 100% support Josh in moving forward with the appointment of the deputy. Thank you.
Second speaker, excuse me, Holly Bamford-Hunt regarding the superintendent hiring process.
Hi, everybody. I'm Holly Bamford-Hunt, Director of Bamford Foundation and Community Volunteer on Boards of Organizations who partner with Tacoma Schools in support of our children's community and youth. And I want to thank the board, and first just want to extend my sincere gratitude and admiration for Superintendent Santorno's leadership. And I do know, and I'm glad, as a community, we have, we will have more time to fully celebrate and thank you for your commitment to students over the course of this upcoming year before your retirement. I'm addressing the board today as Dr. Leon has asked community members for feedback on the internal superintendent succession plan, and just wanted to share a few from my perspective. Leadership transitions can be a healthy opportunity to reflect back on learnings, a moment to consider the present, which holds unique challenges to the district and all of its students and families, and a look to what the future holds for our community. In my capacity as a community volunteer, I just want to share how grateful I've been to work alongside Dr. Garcia, Superintendent Santorno, and the Tacoma Public Schools team for about 10 years. I'm grateful for Dr. Garcia for his thought partnership and leadership over the years since I've had an opportunity to work with him on numerous community projects, system coordination efforts, and specifically with his contributions to the building of the Graduate Tacoma Movement and Foundation for Tacoma Students. It's been inspiring to see the growth of systems that he has helped to establish, such as data systems for accountability aligned with the district's goals, which support a laser focus on using data to support decision-making with an equity lens. I also have had an opportunity to work with Dr. Garcia on bringing the Whole Child Initiative focus to Tacoma and all children in Tacoma Schools and Whole Child Partnerships to support adults in the ways that they work with our children and youth. I recognize as well his commitment to access for children of all ages to before and after school sports, arts, and social-emotional, all sorts of learning opportunities, and how important that is for access and commitment to community partnerships. So in closing, I ask of our board and schools leadership teams, first to, also want to appreciate Dr. Garcia for his extremely hard work each and every day, and using one of his words, relentless, relentless commitment to children. And I want to thank the leadership team to, and ask you to continue to build on the strengths of the systems and commitments that have been developed into the future, including commitment to the equity policy and continuing to develop ways to engage students, families, and communities in supporting each and every student. Thanks, I think I went over.
Thank you. And I'm not, was the chime the three minutes or was that two? Okay, the chime's two, okay, you were good.
Oh, well, good, alright.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Good job, thank you.
Farren Johnson regarding superintendent search.
Good evening, President Cobb and members of the board, thanks for this opportunity. My name's Farren Johnson, I'm the Director of Strategic Initiatives, leading the newly-launched Out of School Time intermediary with Green Trike. And as we all here know, Tacoma is a very relational city, which is why the search for superintendents should not be a national search. I entered into the Tacoma Public School space in 2010, just as the Whole Child Initiative was getting its sea legs about what kind of movement it was going to be for children and youth and the adults who serve them, and how ELO and the Out of School Time plays in this movement. Over the last 12 years, we have been able to lift high-quality, direct-service ELO after-school programs in eight middle schools, almost 22 elementary schools, and have grown our ELO provider pool to over 50 providers from grassroots, mid-size, and big-box youth development organizations to support youth with fun and engaging programs that aim to ignite spark and build meaningful relationships with adults. I share this because it takes time for collaboration and partnerships to seed in a community. It takes time to begin to understand the language of a community and to listen and learn what it needs. It has taken at least 12 years to get to the space, and we have crazy goals to expand even more. We need someone in the space that will continue to advocate for community and schools to partner together. Josh has been that faner of this flame, a supporter of not only me personally and as a youth advocate, but as, but to other youth development system leaders to do this work, which is our superpower, to support children and youth. Now, we may not always agree on everything, Josh knows that, but we agree 100% about what we want when it comes to the best outcomes for our students, and that won't happen without community partnership and collaboration. And I don't want to lose our muscle memory in all of the work that Josh has spent and put to make sure that our partners feel included in this Whole Child work. So we need someone like Josh to lead this space so that we can work and continue to build and grow and not be forgotten in the ELO space. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tanya Durand regarding replacing Superintendent Santorno.
Good evening, thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. My name is Tanya Durand, I'm the Executive Director of Green Trike, I work with Farren. And I would like to start my remarks by thanking Superintendent Santorno. I remember when Carla first came to town, we met, and I asked her what Tacoma Public Schools' plan was with early learning, and she was very honest. At that time, there was no plan, and look how far we've come, so thank you so much. And it has been a delight, I've been at Green Trike for 24 years, it has been a delight to watch, to have watched what's happened in the partnership with Josh and Carla. They put partnership first, you know, they're both famous for saying, we only have the kids one-third of the day, the community has them the other two-thirds of the day, and they bring community in. They let us in, they open the doors, they let us, we come in and we partner. And they lead with innovation, creativity, building community. It's a baton pass in my mind. I agree with Farren, we've made so much progress that it feels like a natural, you know, this is a long, long relay that we're in. And the idea of Carla handing that baton to Josh, knowing that they've worked together to build this amazing foundation so that we can, you know, continue to work together in partnership for the betterment of our children, you know. And I know that Josh has a lot that he's going to want to do to make it his own, and that's exciting too. When I think of Josh, I think about strategic impatience and using that strategic impatience in a way to bring us along for this collective vision, right? Of making this the best place, Tacoma should be the best place to experience childhood. And it takes all of us, it takes the school district, it takes Green Trike, it takes the hospitals, it takes all of us. And so I would urge and have a lot of gratitude to the board to enable that very graceful baton pass to Josh. Thank you so much.
Sean Sylvia is next regarding the superintendent hiring process.
Madam President, Directors, I am Sean Sylvia, the Executive Director of MetroParks Tacoma. And on behalf of the Board of Park Commissioners, I'm here to express our appreciation and gratitude to Superintendent Santorno for the nine years of her leadership, as well as to the board, and for your partnership with MetroParks and the commitment to really jointly serving this community. You know, when, we have worked on many projects together, and I remember the time that Carla leaned over to me when we were doing the groundbreaking of, at the zoo for Sammy, and she said, can you believe that we're actually doing this? And let me remind you that we built a school inside of a zoo that has access for the public inside of a park, a 700-acre park on city land, like that doesn't happen. And so what's great about this, I could tell Carla that I can't believe it. However, what I can say is I know why we do it. And we do these things to make children's lives better. And this is good government, it's hard work, but we leverage public dollars and we increase access to public spaces so that people can have better lives, and we focus on children. I thought of a few projects when I was coming up here, and it was from the course of Jason Lee and Thrive and Keeping Kids, Children's Mind and Bodies Moving, so we bring them from Jason Lee into People's Center. Started thinking about the McKinney Vento Extended Learning Centers that we were having students have safe places to learn during COVID. And this was over at both People's Center and Star Center. And then we worked on over the years Whole Child. This is the after-school clubs and extended learning and the work that we did with sports leagues at all 37 elementary schools. And again, this partnership, it keeps, there's a theme, and I, we were listening to the other speakers that were coming in, about how this is the secret sauce of Tacoma. And basically, this is Dr. Garcia who brought us together and said, you guys need to figure this out, and we all came in and we did after-school programming for all. So with, we have built some amazing partnerships over the years, and trust doesn't happen overnight, it's built on years of coming together and working together. So again, I thank you, I'm proud of our legacy, the work that we all have done. Dr. Garcia, you are a cornerstone of the work. We are fortunate to have you in this community, and I look forward to the next chapter. Thank you.
Tafana Irvin regarding the superintendent choice.
Good evening, President Cobb and the Board of Directors. I'm Tafana Irvin, Executive Director of the Foundation for Tacoma Students. And I like to start with a Josh-ism, that we at Foundation for Tacoma Students are critical friends of Tacoma Public Schools and of the work that has happened over the years. I've been with the Foundation for almost six years, and part of my job is to travel nationally, to learn from, assess, and really get a deeper understanding of urban-serving communities and districts across the country. And I got to tell you, of all of the partnerships that I've visited and all the partnerships like ours that I've talked to, one of the things that continuously comes up is the transition of leadership that really sets a community back. I think it was Farren who talked about, it took 12 years to get to this place. And I tell you, sometimes that surface-level work really does take 12, 15, or 20 years because you're unsure about how you want to embark on a new direction, an innovative direction, as you all talked about today, with school buildings. with school buildings, or with security, or with the way in which you engage your students. And the leadership between both Carla and Josh over the last decade almost has been really unprecedented. And what I would encourage us to think about specifically in the context of this recovery of COVID, in the context of reimagining schools for our children and our youth, is the continuity of leadership that Josh already brings to Tacoma Public Schools. He knows the leadership of this district, he knows the buildings, he knows this community. I too agree that we don't always, as a community and the district, see eye to eye, but that is part of the process, right? Like, you have to be able to go through the discomfort and the back and forth, and the questioning of why we are arriving in this place in order to get to true, a true vision of a place where every child succeeds in school, career, and life. And on behalf of my Board of Directors and my staff, I got to tell you, we have heard several questions around the process, and we are backing the decision, or hopefully are endorsing a decision for Tacoma Public Schools' Board of Directors to move forward with Dr. Garcia as the next superintendent for Tacoma Public Schools. I got to tell you that when you think about what a recovery will look like in the next couple of years, particularly with relief dollars, particularly with the expansion of transient students, you want someone who knows the work and not someone who's learning the work, because it's going to take so long for us to get to that next phase. So with that, I just want to definitely send my endorsement for Mr. Garcia. I think the world of his strategic visioning, and certainly give all of my gratitude to Superintendent Santorno, and looking forward to celebrating her for the next year. So, thank you.
Next Shannon Ergun regarding new superintendent.
Good evening, Shannon Ergun, and I'm the President of Tacoma Education Association. And while I've listened to some very respected community leaders share their thoughts on this process, I have a differing opinion, and I feel like I speak for many of my members. As you stepped into CAB this evening, I hope you reflected on your job as elected officials chosen by the community to govern our district. One of your primary responsibilities is to ensure that management positions are filled through a robust process that builds trust, respect, and faith in you and your ability to govern. As stewards of public education in Tacoma, you have volunteered to put the time and effort in to make the decisions based on thorough examination of issues, concerns, and options. In the 10 days since Superintendent Santorno formally submitted her intent to retire, do you honestly feel that you have gauged the interests of the community, families, students, and employees? Do you honestly believe that you have taken the time to give full consideration to the options available? Do you honestly believe that selecting the first candidate considered without exploring more thoroughly those out there, that you have done what you were elected to do? As an elected leader myself in my own organization, I do know the challenges you face and the pressure you're feeling. I do know that you will never make every constituent happy. However, it is your job to take time to deliberate, explore, and listen so that you are meeting the needs of constituents as much as possible. You have taken some bold decisions this year, and I honor the courage it took to do that. I am personally disappointed that it appears that you are not demonstrating this level of courage in this decision. I've been impressed with the rapidity with which the vaccination clinics were organized. I was full of hope with the process used in renaming Wilson and the consideration for Jason Lee. Truly, this board has governed in a way that has shown the ability to oversee a management effectively. I want to be clear, I am not opposed to our deputy superintendent taking the new role necessarily. However, I do not support just promoting without deliberate and robust consideration of others. I truly hope you will slow down and conduct an application process that provides the opportunity to weigh the options and make a selection based on detailed information. And then, on a separate note, our educators have handled every change that has come at them nimbly and with grace this year. I truly hope that this new distancing guidance does not create additional change before the end of the school year. We are now finding our feet in the hybrid learning process and learning to do it well. Let's support staff, families, and students by not expecting even more of them.
Next speaker is Mark McGaffrey regarding plans for property at 1117 East Division Lane, the golf property. Mark McGaffrey, McGaffe, sorry. We have one written comment that has submitted and is attached to the agenda, and that is Sally Perkins regarding the TPS superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who submitted public comment tonight and who showed up to speak, thank you. Item number eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments or questions about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, just for the community or anyone who might be watching, there are several items on this agenda, and these are relatively routine items that we adopt at each business meeting. The board has had time to review these in advance, but we take action on these regular items all at once. So all those in favor of adopting items on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number nine, policy matters, there are none tonight. Item number 10, financial report. A quarterly presentation on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. The next quarterly report is planned for May 2021. Financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org. Item number 11, curriculum and instruction, there are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item number 12, 12.1, approval of Associated Earth Services, Inc., AESI, services not to exceed $400,000 for the Hunt Middle School Replacement Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve Associated Earth Sciences Incorporated Supplemental Geotechnical Consulting Services at Hunt Middle School. The total value of this purchase order should not exceed $400,000.
Is there a motion to adopt item number 12.1?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments about the item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 12.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number 12.2, approval of the application for fiscal year 2021 Head Start COLA grant. Grant number 10CH01190, NFS waiver.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission for the FY 2021 Head Start COLA grant application, number 10CH01190, in the amount of $78,280, and the NFS waiver in the amount of $19,570, and if awarded, approve expenditure of funds according to the accepted guidelines. Funding source, Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Head Start.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt item number 12.2?
I move to adopt item 12.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments? I have one question, can you tell me what drives the COLA rate for Head Start? Where does that come from? In the same way that IPD drives increases for state-funded or staff? Where's the rate come from?
It is shared with us, but I believe it is the same as the state.
Is it comparable, that's what I was trying to get at, is it comparable or the same?
Yeah, but it is not a local decision to decide that rate, so it comes from the federal government or, and ultimately, the state.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adopting 12.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 12.3, approval to contract with Hansel Phelps Construction Company for their pre-construction design-build services for Fossett Elementary School.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the agreement which states the pre-construction services for the Fossett Elementary School Replacement Project and authorize the superintendent or designated to sign said agreement in the amount of $1,549,379 excluding sales tax.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt item 12.3?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 12.4, approval to negotiate and award Design-Build Alternative Method Contract with Corsmo Construction for Synthetic Field Track and Tennis Court Bundle.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract to Corsmo Construction for the Design-Build Alternative Method for the Synthetic Field Track and Tennis Court Bundle for multiple school sites.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt item 12.4?
I move to adopt, motion, item 12.4.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 12.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. And I appreciate the Lincoln bathrooms, as the former Lincoln student.
Yeah, I need a little word.
Uh, we, before moving on to item number 13, other business, we're going to go back up to our community partner recognition. I think we're ready for that. So recognition of staff, students, and community, 5.1, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Rankles Pharmacy, Liz Rankles.
Thank you, Madam Board President, Board of Directors. This is my first in-person meeting, I was down wondering where everybody was on Zoom, and you guys are up here. So I apologize, but happy to see your masked faces today, it's good to see everyone. I'm Amanda Scott Thomas, the Director of the Community Partnership Office for Tacoma Public Schools, and I'm here today to award the Community Partner Award, the Gold Star Community Partner Award for the month of March. As you well know, Tacoma Public Schools divides partnership as a relationship between students, families, school, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community, we've heard that a lot tonight. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to partnership, we know TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone, and in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Partner Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community member who has made a difference by going far to do what's best for kids. Tonight, we are going to be honoring the Rankles Pharmacy, Liz Rankles. It's a family-owned, local pharmacy, independent, it's in the Stadium District. There's been three generations that have served this community for over 85 years. When seeking vaccines for Tacoma Public School staff, Rankles was the first to answer the call, specifically Liz Rankles. Liz Rankles has continually sought opportunities for vaccination of TPS staff and has been in constant communication on ways in which the pharmacy could support us. She has been an advocate for TPS staff and incorporated TPS into her weekly plannings for vaccine. The pharmacy has opened its doors to our staff to be vaccinated in the pharmacy and provided large vaccine events at Stadium High School. Rankles has extended the opportunity for vaccinations to 450 TPS staff thus far, and the number is continually growing. Liz Rankles has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty to support Tacoma Public Schools. Her partnership has helped decrease the barriers to vaccination faced by TPS staff, which in turn helps our educators feel more confident to return to work in the classroom. Liz let us know earlier this morning that she wasn't going to be able to be here because pharmacy duties called, but in her absence, I do want to give her an applause for for her work, and we will be sure to get her Gold Star Award to her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is such a timely and deserved recognition. I haven't met Liz personally, but I do want to just, I've been in the pharmacy before, but I just want to thank her for committing to being our partner in this effort and appreciate the effort that her and her team have gone into to make this happen for members of our staff. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, like, please pass on our appreciation, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number, I can scroll down the back to it. Item number 13, election of superintendent under RCW 28A 4010. I just want to read, by way of background on this item, RCW 28A 4010 provides that the Board of Directors shall elect a superintendent who shall have such qualifications as the local school board alone shall determine. Following notice of retirement of Superintendent Santorno, the Board met an executive session to begin succession planning and to evaluate the qualifications of Deputy Superintendent Garcia for the role of superintendent. The President of the Board of Directors recommends that the Board elect Joshua J. Garcia as superintendent of Tacoma Public Schools and enter into contract negotiations. Is there a motion to adopt item 13.1?
I move that we adopt item 13.1.
It's been moved, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Just want to offer a couple of comments on this item. The speakers, some of the speakers during public comment made me think that there's so much I want to say, but I'm going to try to be succinct and not say all the things that I want to say. I've served on this board now, in my sixth year. And so in that time, I've had an opportunity to see the leadership team between Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia in many ways. I think it's a privilege to serve in this role, and I do know that hiring a superintendent is one of our top priorities. And I also have the privilege to have worked my entire career in education. I've not, I was not blessed with the skills and talents to be in the classroom, but I always think of, my whole life is about working on behalf of kids. I'm not the person to work with kids, I can be a mentor. I used to tell Rob Jones with College Success Foundation, "Please just give me the student who only needs information." I can't handle like the students who need more, like, I'm just not good at it. I'm a rule follower, and that's not my skill set. So I give honor to all classroom teachers, but like you said, my work though, and my passion has always been working to ensure that students have access to high-quality education because that's what I got in Tacoma. And I got it in ways that almost feel by chance. I went to Ginny Reed other time when it was a magnet school, so we had the Young Astronauts Program. I got to be in Young Astronauts After School. And Baker, we had Natural Helpers. And these are things that, once I got to high school, I realized weren't at every school. So in my time on the board, I've seen the level of partnerships and the level of commitment that this leadership team and thought that this leadership team puts into creating opportunities in a district like ours that doesn't always have those opportunities. We are not a wealthy district on average. We're not a district where there are longstanding structures that exist to create opportunities for youth, and so we have to build them. We have to think them up, and we have to want them for our kids. And I've seen in this leadership team that that is the vision and the want that they have for our students. So now sticking to my notes, as we all know, Superintendent Santorno has announced her plan to retire at the end of the 2021-22 school year. And for us, we appreciate, for me, I appreciate that advanced notice because I believe that in order to provide for a smooth transition of leadership, we need time to kind of deliberately plan and act around that. In recent conversations with the superintendent, and as she stated in her letter notifying us of her retirement, it's clear that she has some significant goals that she wants to accomplish in the next 14 months in the district. And by kind of its nature, the deputy superintendent's position doesn't always stand out in the spotlight. So I can understand how some people in our community don't know, like, some of what I described us getting to see. We get to see the way that this partnership happens in reality and how close and how collaborative it has been. We get to see the leadership team and the kind of the culture of leadership that they've built across the district. And in general, I believe that our whole community has benefited from the approach that they've taken to designing systems that's get, helps support and facilitate and enable the outcomes that we're seeing. The graduation rate, for example, and the consistent year-over-year increases that we've seen in it, just as one example, didn't come about by chance and doesn't come about solely by the work of people. It's definitely fueled by the work of people, but we need to establish the goal. We need to monitor the goal, we need to figure out what the partnerships we need to put in place are in order to get to that goal. So generally, I believe that the consistent vision that we've had over the course of the last 10 years has helped contribute to that year-over-year increase and positive outcomes that we've seen. And I personally believe fully that Dr. Garcia is the right person to continue to refine, improve, and implement that vision moving forward. So just as one last story that, to me, is evidence of this partnership and why I'm so confident in the potential of Josh's leadership. My first graduation is when I became aware of the matching silver tennis shoes that Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia have and come out special for graduation. That, that to me was like, I want to be in that club. I want to be close enough partners to, with them and so excited about just that celebratory moment that I'm in the matching tennis shoe club. So I know it seems like a trivial story, but to me, it just is evidence of, you have to collaborate around that. You have to talk about, what are we gonna, how are we gonna celebrate this together every year? So I just appreciate examples like that across the board. I appreciate the leadership team that I've seen. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes into the work that you do, and I'm excited for what the future will bring. So before I open it up to comments from board members, I'm just, um, want to invite Superintendent Santorno to speak to this motion too.
And so I'm going to start, uh, where I always do, and that's that I'm just grateful to have the opportunity to work in Tacoma. It has been a dream job, and I appreciate that. Um, what's important is that the board members have been so steadfast. You guys have been uh, committed to policy, committed to strategic planning, and committed to accountability, and that makes a difference. I'm grateful for the team I work with, and I'm proud of what we've accomplished, but we have work to do, and that's what this transition's about. I'm confident that we are on the right trajectory to eliminate gaps and to accomplish our goals, your goals, your strategic goals by sticking to our plan and improving our actions. For nine years, I've worked with the best partner, collaborator, friend, and work husband on the planet. Um, he is innovative, relentless, caring advocate, whose first question in every conversation is how can I help the kids? This is a good time to start a transition after we, you know, as we're coming through this uh, this COVID piece. And as President Cobb said, the best organizations to ensure stability and continued success engage in succession planning. I don't know if the community knows that. Dr. Josh, Josh Garcia gets offers for jobs from all over the country, all the time. And he has stayed committed to staying in Tacoma and to be, to our district, our educators, and our students. I think it's important to say that um, a transition is a different animal. It's about the tug and pull of going to the next stage and teaching and learning. Uh, we'll trend, Josh and I will transition departments and work plans during this time. We'll take, he'll take on new work throughout the year, and I'll be assisting. There's not a deputy superintendent. There's two of us working together, ebbing and flowing as the job needs to get this final work done before I transition the job to him. It's a fluid process. I love this quote from um, what, what it says about Harvard. Ideally, Harvard Educational School says, "The formal transition process become, begins nine to twelve months in advance of the expected transition date." While there is no one-size-fits-all approach, Harvard recommends that the incoming and outgoing CEO build a plan together and review it with the board. We've seen this happen in various ways across the state and nation. I transitioned with Doc, uh, with Dr. Art Jarvis for six months, Metro Parks. Sean Sylvia was just here. He did the similar approach with the CEO transition. Districts that have hired within have the ability to sustain the trajectory that we're on. I want that for us, and you could not make any better decision for a new superintendent.
Thank you. Other comments from the board? I'll start with Vice President Bonbright.
Thank you. Um, yeah, absolutely. I, I want to say, um, I really appreciate everything you just said, Superintendent, and also President Cobb. And like you, you know, I, I come out of an early learning background, early field, a policy, policy person, and I, so I'm not necessarily the one in the classroom, although thank you for the, for the teachers. They're, they're, they are amazing. Our teachers are fantastic, and all of our staff are. Um, but that's not what I do. And, and so I'm a, I'm a policy wonk who understands what I see, high-quality policy work. And I've been in this field a long time. And um, so for the past ten years, it's clear to me that the Tacoma school, um, schools has been on a positive trajectory for student success and academic achievement. And as a board member, also, it's important to know that we're also financial, the financial stewardship that is so strong in this, um, in Tacoma Public Schools. And um, and I, we heard tonight from the construction, uh, about the construction of the buildings, and you see how, how um, how strategically we have implemented the bond measure and, and worked with communities, and so it, you know, the job of superintendent isn't singular in any way. Um, it is, it is a huge responsibility over a large budget and a great different, diversity of staff and eleven unions and uh, eleven or twelve unions, and all sorts of work that takes a very um, sharp mind and a strategic thinker. And obviously, Superintendent Santorno was definitely that, and I would say that um, that Josh Garcia is as well. As we've heard from many of our key community leaders this evening, who articulately expressed why a national search is not a good idea for Tacoma, um, in our partnership-focused city, where we have a secret sauce of working together and leading, a leading by example. Um, and, and that's another thing that we learned tonight, which many of us knew, but some may not have, is that, that Tacoma Public Schools is actually a lighthouse district for other districts in our state and across the nation. And to, they, they, seeking to learn how they could do better in many ways, and examples are, you know, how did we get the increased graduation rates over eight years, um, to go from fifty-five percent to eighty-nine point nine percent? Um, you know, and increasing academic rigor, bringing equity of access to advanced placement and other academic programs to students who had never, had only dreamed of it or never even known they could. Um, now it's an expectation, and you have to opt out. Um, those are the kinds of things that Dr. Garcia brought to, brought with him to this, to the table. Um, we've also, in Tacoma Public Schools has expanded the career and technical opportunities in new and innovative and creative ways that have given pathways to students who, who may not want to go on to college, but have other opportunities. And our school system has really thought that through and done it in, in unique and exemplary ways. Um, also using data in innovative ways and developing and serving the whole child and supports at school and at home. And, you know, these are just, you know, it's a very small list of the things that, that um, um, Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia have um, worked on. But we have become a model of excellence, and um, under the team leadership, and I say team leadership because you just heard the superintendent say it, that they have since day one, when they became, worked together, been a team. The team leadership of, of Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. Um, Dr. Garcia is strategic and intentional with his leadership and decisions, all of which are laser-focused on what's best for the students. Um, and that really, to me, speaks, speaks volumes. Um, and I, we, we received, you know, uh, some mail, not, you know, an ignorant amount of mail on this topic. Um, but I was moved by um, the multiple letters that we got from, from staff um, that were, and the quotes were just incredible, and I've got a few, and I know others want to speak, but I'm just gonna, just gonna read a couple because they're really, they're really, um, I think, spot on. Um, and we just talked about his ultimate goal, quote, "His ultimate goal is to increase access, improved quality, the quality of experience, and equitable accelerated opportunities to fuel growth and the success of students and staff at all levels and positions, families, and the community of Tacoma that he passionately serves." So this is from someone who works not directly for Josh, but in the system. Um, he also, another quote is, um, "Assessing strengths as a means of delivering change on a continuum of improvement and innovation." And that totally speaks to Josh's approach to, to how to address problems. Uh, "He's a natural motivator, whose words of encouragement are inspiring and uplifting." Another one is, "Not only does Dr. Garcia do great things, he also inspires greatness from others." And I, you know, I find that one particularly compelling, because when I came on this board as a newbie uh, in November of two thousand nineteen, uh, you know, K-12 world is a little complicated, and um, Dr. Garcia just said, "No problem, just, you know, call anytime," and, and he just, you know, was, every time I'd call with what I thought was a silly question, he passed, you know, just sat down and calmly explained things to me, and it's just, you know, he's just got that style. Um, "He doesn't shy away from taking on difficult tasks, and he deals with people on a level of dignity and respect." Um, and just a cup, one more or two more. He's a leader who knows that this work doesn't get, all get done by one person. He is collaborative, a team builder, and a good listener. He knows when to lead from the front and when to push from behind and prop others up. Leadership is speaking the truth and pointing towards hope. Dr. Garcia has proven again and again that he speaks the truth, listens to learn, asks for feedback, and continues to provide opportunities for learning and growth. And I'll just, I'll do one more. Josh puts students first. I have seen Josh continue to push the thing and the, and push to think outside the box and put kids in the forefront of decisions. He is strategic and intentional with his leadership and decisions that impact student learning, and everything impacts student learning.
Thank you. Director Leon, do you have any comments?
I do. I'm gonna listen to the other members first, if possible. See if the members have any comments.
You should, feel free to go ahead. Like I-
Okay, sure. So, uh, I think we've heard some excellent um, discussion around Assistant Superintendent and the work he's done. Um, you know, some of the quotes that were made, relentless, keeping muscle memory, innovative, creativity, the strategic impatience. Kids first comes up a lot. Um, it refers to voices our community tonight, of course, um, and then through email voicemails that we've gotten. Uh, significant majority really have spoken very carefully of Dr. Garcia's qualifications, leadership, you know, the ability to listen actively, uh, really just the general body of work that he's uh, done, not just here, but um, his previous work. So I do believe he would be an exceptional superintendent for Tacoma. Uh, I do still feel uncomfortable not having had any type of search to look at any other um, candidates at all um, in this process. I or none of the board have ever chosen a superintendent in the past. I believe really our district has been improving in really all aspects, and I think the trajectory is positive and going in the right direction. Um, the search would have allowed for some discussion, possibly around, um, you know, the future trajectory if, not that it needed to change, but visions around um, what was, uh, ways to improve in the district. We have uh, new realities in how we really could approach equity, you know, the pandemic itself. We're still in the middle of a post-pandemic education, what that could look like. So I think we've been making really large strides. Can we do more, you know, effectively or uh, more efficiently, more work efficiently? Um, I hope, I think we can. We can improve on what we've already done. It's good work. Hope we can have a real significant, you know, family, uh, staff, student, you know, and partner conversation uh, around um, the trajectory. Uh, I believe everybody believes it's, it's going in the right direction. We've heard from many partners in that way. And that uh, what this could look like uh, could be determined by the Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent uh, as they potentially do this transition. So if we take the form of extensive student-staff meeting forums, ideally, as this election process is ongoing, but at the very least, possibly soon after it's finished. Yeah, we did hear from one um, staff group. We've heard many, many amazing, uh, amazing recounts of the work that he's done uh, from a lot of administrators in, in our, in our system. I didn't, I didn't get very many, uh, very much feedback from uh, other staff or teachers. Um, we heard from the Teachers Union President today, and we heard those comments today. So I think it's a, that's a big component of our, of our education, the biggest, right, is the, is the teacher component. So I think we should consider that in our, you know, deliberation here. So um, really, I think, uh, you know, many community members have expressed also to me through the voicemails and the, and the emails, the need for what they feel like is more transparency and possibly slowing down uh, in the process. So I think that we have a year, year and a half in this process, so I hope that we can express that transparency and uh, and show everybody that their, that their voice counts, uh, if they have new ideas, uh, that they want to take the district. So um, I think that uh, is um, just passion for kids and always thinking about investing in kids and kids first is, is shown through in, in many of the comments tonight and many of the, uh, the letters. Really just uh, amazing letters we've gotten from administrators too.
Thank you. Director Keating?
Uh, I wrote up my thoughts so I can be succinct. Um, not only is Dr. Garcia highly qualified, he is also strongly positioned to advance our partnership priority benchmore at a time that is especially important. As we work to assess and address the COVID recovery effort, our local, state, and federal partnerships are crucial components to our future successes. It has been through these partnerships that Josh has helped lead the responses, planning, assessing needs, and impact this crisis has had. Over the past year, we have faced unimaginable challenges. Collectively, as a board and individually, we have had countless hard, complex conversations with Superintendent Santorno and Dr. Garcia. The pace has been relentless, to say the least. There is a significant difference between reactive versus responsive. On numerous occasions, I have greatly appreciated Josh, Josh's skill at responsive leadership. Being able to slow down to assess situations holistically takes discipline and a clear vision. Some would call it your why. Time and time again, Josh has helped me shift from being reactive to being responsive. The pressure and expectations of these roles are indescribable. At the heart of every conversation I have had with Dr. Garcia is what's best for students. We do not know the full, long-term ramifications or depths of the impacts this pandemic has and continues to have on our students, staff, and community. There is no superintendent or deputy superintendent in this country who has experienced a global pandemic before now. No one. We are all living through this event together. What is best for kids is stability. We are still in the process of supporting getting kids back into classrooms for the first time in over a year. With the significant and repeated changes we have all been navigating, it is more important than ever that we maintain strong, proven, exceptional leadership. Josh has demonstrated to me consistently and persistently that he has the skills, knowledge, and capacity to effectively lead our district. Consistency is paramount right now.
Thank you. Dr. Strozer?
Turn my mic on. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. So, uh, one of the main reasons that, uh, our district has been so successful in recent years is due to the consistency of leadership. This is what our students need right now more than ever. Superintendent Santorno has done an amazing job, and I'm quite confident that she'll tell you herself that she's received uh, quality, high-level assistance and vision from Josh Garcia to help chart the way forward. Let's not forget, eleven years ago, eleven short years ago, this district was labeled what? A dropout factory. And I don't think you can just lose that title without being intentional in your efforts to turn things around. So let's look at where we are right now, and let's look at where we were. I'd also like to echo the fact that, uh, we ain't broken. So we, we're not looking for anyone to come in here and fix something. We are, however, uh, looking for someone who can chart the path forward with knowledge and lived experience of this district and this community, and an understanding of what it takes to not only move the needle, but push the needle. I strongly believe that over the last nine, what, ten years, uh, Josh has established himself as someone who can do just that. One of the things that I've heard, uh, is that this is a perfect opportunity to go in a different direction. I don't agree. Change for the sake of change does not automatically equate to progress. Every superintendent in this country is faced with the exact same challenge right now. How to right the ship, how to balance the ship post-COVID-nineteen and best-served students. All of the pandemic leadership experience is being gained right now. I think we're in a great position. We, we don't have a deputy superintendent who only puts on a nice suit, goes and sits up in his office with his feet on his desk, sip coffee all day. We have someone who is on the ground, front lines, doing uh, the work that's best for the students, the students of our district. We have someone with experience that is more than qualified to take the next step, somebody who is and has been committed to this district. People don't get the nod to move up or be promoted for just- People don't get the nod to move up or be promoted for just doing their jobs well. They get the move, uh, they get the, the, the nod or the move up because of their potential to do more. I say all that passionately, and I mean every single thing that I said, but on one final note, I, I do want folks to know that I heard, I heard, and I saw your emails, saw your comments, uh, concerns, both positive and negative, taking them into account, but I am extremely confident in whatever decision that we move going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I think we'll move to a roll call vote.
Agenda item thirteen point one, election of superintendent under RCW twenty-eight A four hundred oh one oh. President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Abstain.
Director Stroger?
Aye.
The superintendent is elected, four with one abstention.
Thank you. I want to invite Deputy Superintendent Garcia to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President. If I, may I like to
Careful.
change my view here. I wrote a couple, uh, different comments based on wherever you'd go. And there is some consistency. Wherever you go, I'll still be. First and foremost, um, I appreciate the comments tonight. I think you heard honesty, um, and I think you heard respect, uh, even if it was, uh, about a different process, or even if it was about a partnership. This work is never easy. I love talking about Tacoma with a caveat that I don't like talking about myself. I love the city. I love our community partners. I love our staff. Even on days that we don't all love each other or like each other, we still love each other. And I know that doesn't sound right, but it's true. I love our families and I love our students. I make mistakes, but I never quit. And I'll never quit on our kids, and I'll never quit on our community. So, together is better. Students, staff, community, Board of Directors, thank you. I'm humbled and honored to be a part of the next step in our shared journey. Although this action item had to have one individual's name, it was an action item for Team Tacoma. Tonight, you recognize together is better. And it was an acknowledgement that the Tacoma schools and our community, who many do label as broken, is not broken, but rather, it's accelerating and it's excelling. With more work to do, we have not arrived. Tonight is a commitment to the belief, together is better. Your action was an acknowledgement that staff at all levels, our community partners, our community as a whole, have been relentlessly working to support the whole child, and that you plan to commit, continue that dream. Tonight, you sent a message that you want us to work together, not as individuals, to address complex and nuanced challenges through our relationships, partnerships, and hard work. I thank you because for the last nine years, I've dedicated my life to being one of those commitment pieces, to that togetherness. Tonight, I give you my commitment to the work, even though it's tough, when there is no single one right answer. Tonight, I want you to know that I will work to support the whole child through partnership at all levels, from the boardroom to the living room. Finally, and most importantly, I'd like to thank a few people. I'd like to thank you, the board, and our previous board members who set us on this journey. You have relentlessly volunteered your time, your money, your lives, to serving in our shared vision. I recognize that, and that is not lost on me. I would like to thank all of our staff. For anyone that thinks that one person is doing any of this work alone, we are mistaken. The secret sauce is all of us together. We've, could never have made it this far without your relentless effort, staff, and we will continue forward in a manner with all of us working together. I would like to thank all of our whole child partners. Tacoma is like no other city. And you heard tonight that partnerships are not easy. No meaningful relationship is easy. Your commitment and trust is why this community is special. I'd like to thank our families, because I recognize, as someone who has a family, that our families are doing the hard work every day. We are committed to working with you and doing better. This one's gonna be hard. I'd like to thank Carla, a true hero that has led with strategy, grace, and compassion. I've learned from her, and I will work relentlessly to keep her dream to support every student every day alive in all of us. I'd like to thank my family for supporting me, sacrificing our time together, but never our love. This work is tough. It is lonely sometimes, and unfortunately, we see the hate in the world way too often. I want to thank my wife, who's never left me alone. With grace, she has always known that each one of the children is one of ours. To you two and all of your colleagues, I want to tell you, follow your dreams, your destiny, it will never be easy or perfect, but make no mistake, each of you is worth it. Tonight, you have a whole city working on your behalf, because tonight, together, it's better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the agenda item alluded to, the next steps in this process will be to begin, um, contract negotiations, so that item will be coming back to another business meeting in the future. Um, I think that in, um, that item, it'll be more explicit about timeline for this transition, be able to provide, I think, at that point, a little bit more detail about, like Superintendent Santoro alluded to, kind of the roles and responsibilities that the two will have over the course of this transition. And I think I want to reiterate too, that we all read, as Director Strozer said, we all read and like take into consideration the feedback that we get from whoever sends it. Sometimes people don't even live in Tacoma, but we read those messages and we take that input too. So I think collectively, we have talked about this before throughout the year. We've had a lot of transition and change and challenges to address over the course of the last couple of years, and we need to get better at creating structures for listening and taking in feedback. We've gotten better this year as a board with our email communication and have built a system for us to manage that better, but we need to keep getting better. And I think through this transition, we're committed to figuring out a way to take in feedback of, about the continued implementation of the vision moving forward. So stay tuned, four more to come, and, um, we'll just keep doing this together. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number fifteen, board comments and reports. Sorry, I was skipping over things, thank you. Item number fourteen, report to the board, demonstration of Compass Student Application.
Mr. Zeke Edman is going to join us tonight. Tonight, you're going to see a demonstration of an innovative, uh, project that started a number of years in partnership with the Stewart Foundation, and it's called the Compass Student Application.
Thank you.
Zeke plugs in, I'll give you a little bit of background. Zeke has been our fearless leader of both the data, the DART team, but also previously one of our fantastic principals. And Zeke has taken a concept and brought it to reality with this idea that students have many gifts, and if we can give them a platform to demonstrate that, they can show how wonderful they really are. So is that Zeke?
I feel like a new friend even in there. One mic, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Perfect. President Cobb, board, Superintendent Santoro, do we call it Superintendent Garcia?
Nope.
Good. I wasn't ready for that. All right. So, back to kids. Um, we did start with this idea, uh, we knew that, uh, we as adults have a ton of tools, you have a ton of tools, you have them in your phone and your computer, things that tell you, your bank accounts, your car tells you where to go, your thermostat probably talks to you when you don't want it to. Uh, teachers have a ton of tools, we know that during COVID, we've had to stand up a lot of tools, but we still don't have something in kids' hands that tell them the things that we have as adults. How are you doing? Where are you at? Where are you in this journey? What does it look like today? What do you want to do tomorrow? Who are you connecting with? What do you need when you're in crisis? Uh, and could we get that into an application space purely based on a success mindset? So, in comes Compass. We have been working on this for a couple of years, we have had multiple partners, uh, we have, uh, sat with student groups at different middle schools and asked them what they would want to see, if we could tell them anything about their journey in school. Uh, their creativity is unbelievable, so of course, they had things like, I want a, uh, video game joystick and a brain, and if I'm having too much tech time, my joystick gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and if I'm doing my academic stuff, my brain should be getting bigger and bigger and bigger. They can visualize these things. Um, Jason Lee gumball machines, and the size of the gumball was how well I was doing in math and reading and science and clubs and activities. But we also saw kids in the reality. We saw Truman, uh, they drew a tree, and they had different branches, and it represented different subjects. And it was a group of girls, and science was the smallest branch. Right? So when you sit down and you ask them, they just tell you, oh, I'm not, I'm not a scientist. They're sixth graders. They don't know. I'm not sure I was really like potty trained by sixth grader, like I had no business making decisions about something that big at that age. So how do we fill them in? So in Compass, I'm gonna kind of walk you through here, uh, when a student lands, they get an opening kind of tile, uh, just like any app, it's like, welcome, here's what you're about to experience, uh, recognizes you by name when you log in. It's gonna give you a chance to check out your grades and see your grades at different levels and connect with your teachers. It's gonna give you space to mood in, and also a little more of how that partnership came about. We talked about badges. We worked with, uh, University of Washington actually has a gamification department, and that was a wild experience to sit with that group and just talk about what is extrinsic and intrinsic, and what does this look like for kids, and how do you give recognition for work, uh, and effort? And then goal setting, and we did quite a bit of looking into what does it take to really set meaningful goals? And how do we explore this experience from kindergarten all the way through? So when we get to the homepage, first thing a student sees, right now, we're live for middle schoolers, we go live for high schoolers after spring break, and the fall, we'll have a third through fifth grade version, and then we'll start looking at how small can we go for our little kids with much more visuals and less language. Um, and we think that's achievable. So they see their GPA, it's an unofficial capture for the week, uh, but kind of gives them a rudder to see where they're at in progress. We use some social media language around streaks, so I see how many days I've been attending in a row, my overall attendance percentage, and then on this homepage, I'll see my most recent mood in, I've got a couple of goals set, uh, cooking dinner for parents, improving my grades. We have an interest section, how do we find out what our kids like? How do we find out on a one-to-one level? How do we find out on a larger school level? And then as the kid continues to scroll down their homepage, they'll start to see, uh, badges they've earned. Uh, I added my first goal, so whoops, I got a badge for that. I had an attendance streak, I made it five days in a row, so I get a badge for that. These are little pieces that they add up over time. Now, I've been on time to school, we have a lot of kids that might have great attendance for the day, but can't always get there on time, how do we start, uh, recognizing that? And then we have our I-Radi assessment, so this kid is, uh, level one gold, uh, so they've earned that badge. So let's kind of cruise through, uh, when they get into grades, again, they see their GPA, every, uh, feature they get into gives them kind of a walkthrough, just a slight overview, welcome, this is about grades, we have different video links, explanations, we'll start bringing in more student voice so they can hear from others about why grades do matter. Uh, they actually start to see their data. So we talked earlier about all this information we have as adults, how do we get it into the student's hands? So the student can see their GPA here in green, they see their school's GPA from semester one to two, and they see the district average for that same grade level. So having worked, uh, on several different parts of town in Tacoma as a principal, as a teacher, uh, they have comes, you know, and I, I think I have the highest grades in the school, great, great, today, right? What is your journey, where are you going? What does that look like when we stack you up in this city, when you start competing for scholarships or move forward? So we want to give kids that opportunity to see that perspective. When they come in, they see their overall grade, when they click in, they have the opportunity to connect an email with teacher, to see each assignment broken down. So now you get into that piece where, uh, we have kids that are given opportunities to retest, giving kids opportunities to see how they're, uh, performing as a trend, where am I in my participation, or my homework, or my assessments? Uh, so we're trying to leverage the space where kids can really engage, uh, have this conversation with teachers, with peers, reach out for supports. And then moods. So now, uh, when we talk about moods, we had a partnership with Leah Cooper, um, she's, uh, one of the founders for this Zones of Regulation. Uh, when we really started using this in Tacoma in the beginning, we had the four zones, and we had four to five moods per zone. And when we sat down and had a chance to start meeting with her, it just flourished. So now it was like, look, I've got like ten per zone, and I've been playing with some language that's more teen appropriate versus small kid appropriate, and so where do you want to go with this? And it was like, yes, please, we'll take all of the above, and let's make it fit for Tacoma. So we sat through mood by mood with our whole child department and kind of customized what this would look like for Tacoma. So we gave again that overview of what zones look like, and then we get into the space where a kid can come in and mood in. So we have our blue zone, uh, and you can see we've used emojis and leveraged some short language, uh, and a kid can come in and pick, uh, if they're in a blue, if they're in a green. Chill, right? You can see some of this teen language, relaxed, proud, focused, uh, happy. And the yellow zone, and what you'll see here is a small, uh, little tag that'll show up a couple different places. So we know in some zones, when kids are mooding in, they're having a rough day, and depending on what they have for resources around them, this could be a situation where a kid is solo, right? And so now I'm in a position where, uh, I'm mad or frustrated or terrified, and maybe this has been going for a couple of days. And so we've put in as a bank of resources for hotlines, right? Places they can call, we know a lot of our kids, uh, at school have that adult, hopefully they can reach out to, but if they don't, maybe this is another opportunity. So mental health and suicide, uh, crisis hotlines, uh, there's several pieces we've put in here for students, and we just continue to build out as we know, uh, different students will have different needs. So it's an opportunity, uh, for us to connect. And again, we started with middle and high school kids, so we know they're a little older, uh, when we look at elementary, we'll look for a different, uh, set of resources for them. So let's walk through, um, I guess typically when people are presenting, they're probably nervous, but, uh, I really like this kind of stuff, so, uh, I'm pretty happy right now, uh, I can confirm my mood, and then when I mood in, it actually gives me a tip. So we've got anywhere from ten to fourteen tips per mood. So now I could be the kid, um, that's maybe in class and I'm having a rough day, I go to mood in, uh, that I'm furious, I confirm it, and now I get a tip. And the tips are timestamped, so we know when the kids are in school, so we have a different recommendation when you're sitting in class, because we're not going to tell you to just go out and shoot hoops, that may or may not go very well, but it may be ultimately what you need, and these are coaching things we can provide. But we also know when you're home, that you might be able to go out and go for a walk or, right, sit down and pet, pet the pet, or something like that, right? So we provide different context for tips depending on when we know they, uh, where they are in their day. A kid can like or dislike the tip if it doesn't work for them, and that gives us some data back as we make different recommendations next time they're in that space. And then again, the data piece, kids are able to see, how are my moods kind of stacking up over time? When was I frustrated, excited, nervous, things like that? What tips did I enjoy? And so they can see that trend. Badges, this comes into that recognition piece. Uh, again, we give a little intro, welcome, this is kind of the overview of badges. We have them for academics, for assessments, for, uh, attendance, and then in-app applications. And we have room to do this in a custom way, uh, as well. So if, uh, Jijroni is a middle years program for IB, we can do IB badges for them and FAS, we can do STEM and PBL, we can have the Bobcat Way, uh, there's plenty of opportunity for us to kind of custom build these for Tacoma partnerships, after-school programs. Uh, eventually we'll be able to build a lot more of these layers in. Kids can go through and kind of preview the different badges that are available, if they see one that kind of strikes their interest and click on it, it will expand out and give a little explanation as to what the badge is, and then if it's something that they're interested in, they can set a goal. And so one of the next- And so one of the next sections that I was gonna go to is goal setting. I can get through it through multiple pieces. I get a rough grade. I have the option to go set a goal, work on that grade. Having a bad day, I can set a goal, right? And so we want to leverage this piece. And what we found when we were researching goals is, it's pretty cut and dry, like uh, New Year's resolutions, right? Like I'm gonna be swimsuit beach ready by summer. And then June hits and it's like, well, I didn't cut out Dairy Queen, so it didn't happen, right? We don't have those milestones layered in. And so how do we get kids to start thinking that way? If I want to make the track team, I can't wait till the first day of practice or tryouts. What am I doing ahead of time? How am I getting myself a pair of shoes? I'm gonna start by walking. I'm gonna work my way up. And so kids come in and they don't naturally have those cues. So we have these pop-up boxes that kind of give them some sentence starters, some pieces to think about, to title their goal. To think through, what is your why? Uh, to prompt them to go a little deeper than just kind of a superficial layer. And so we have found that folks that are able to dive into some of these layers. Uh, build some milestones, add some pieces, have a better chance of reaching their goals. Part of that goal piece is then the progress. So if you've read anything about motivation, right? It's the stickers on the refrigerator, it's the reminders on the dashboard, it's things that help you see where you're going in that goal piece. And so this dashboard helps monitor. So in order to improve grades, this student has set a couple of milestones. In their milestones, they can kind of see their progress. The flags, a little one and two means they're behind on one of their milestones. So it gives them that reminder to kind of reestablish where they're going. And then they can also see goals they've completed. In this case, student wanted to run a five thirty mile, which I don't even know if I could do on a bike. So uh, right? Kids are out there working and doing their thing, uh, showing their progress. Interest started as kind of an idea. Uh, we were curious, how do we find ways to see what uh, kids are interested in? And in relationship to all the crazy things that are going on in the world. And so we came up with some categories, some buckets. Uh, we have academics, careers, uh, entertainment, hobbies, activities, culture and travel. Uh, which of course, we haven't all been able to travel a lot, so let's pick on that. So when it pops up, we get a photo, we get a rating scale. In the career section, we give explanations. And uh, the coaches did a great job of trying to find pictures that represent our student body. So uh, as you can imagine, as far as free photos out there, it was actually really difficult to find lots of photos of women and students, right? Uh, and positions of power and students of color and right, these different roles. And so uh, we want kids to be able to go in there and see themselves in the space and be able to read that and think through, is this something that interests me? And then do I love it? Do I like it? Is it something I want to learn about? I don't know, I don't like. Uh, yesterday, last week, I was talking to middle school counselors. They do a lot of like career day, uh, college stuff. So I'm like, you could come in here and see what are the, the popular things that your kids are interested in. Those would be the guest speakers you would try to reach out for. That's what your student body is communicating to you. So of course, I'd love to go to Italy. Uh, why not? Uh, and as I click through them, uh, it tells me, uh, it just kind of keeps populating each one. I do that for all of them. And then there's a dashboard that'll show me uh, how that expands. Attendance. Uh, students see their attendance. This particular student has high attendance, awesome. So they don't have a whole lot on their calendar, but if it did have missing days or tardies or things like that, it would show a color code pattern. Uh, we try to keep that language in front of them, why attendance is important, what it leads to for grades and GPA, uh, graduation, things like that. Um, but we want kids to be able to take some ownership in that space. And then on the data side, and yes, uh, as a little bit of a data nut, um, this has been a fun build out. So how do we help students see where they're at? So this is the interest piece. In a radar or web graph, and they can see the academics, careers, cultures, entertainment, athletics, right? And they can see as they start clicking in what they love more, like more, don't know. And that'll take shape and help them see the things that interest them the most and which way they kind of lean. Um, they can see it overall stacked. They can see their goals and their timelines. So here's the timelines for the students for cooking dinner for parents over spring break, improving their grades by end of semester. Uh, they can see their badge counts. The stern, students earn quite a few badges, which is awesome. Um, but they also have a pretty good balance. They have them in academics. Uh, a couple for assessment, quite a few for attendance, uh, and a little bit of in-app usage. They see their moods overall and kind of trend over time. And then we go back to those bigger data points around their attendance. How they see themselves across the district and their GPA. Other than that, that is what we've built to date. We have a whole nother list of features. We'll kind of continue to build over time. Uh, the Stewart Foundation is really the group that helped us kick that off. Uh, one of the cool pieces about that group. Uh, if you guys remember the carnation, uh, evaporated milk cans, uh, Stewart Foundation started uh, within Kent, Washington. Uh, with an entrepreneur who started that whole process, what, a hundred and some years ago? So uh, they've kept a lot of their work here in Washington, California, kind of west coast. So they've been a great partner. We've had all kinds of uh, processes through this journey. Um, our CIO, um. Ed Garcia, uh, I've probably driven him crazy. I'm surprised his hair looks as good as it does. Um, but he's been a champ. First, we were gonna do some of this with Microsoft, then it was a different vendor, then we can build it in-house, and then Zeke said, and so. Uh, but we've arrived, and so it's been fantastic. Uh, my guy back there, Ryan Howland from project management. Uh, he has hair like mine, because I have pretty much driven him crazy through this uh, as well. And so uh, it's been fantastic to get this into kids' hands.
Thank you for the presentation. Before opening up for comments or questions from the board, I want to defer to our student board members. See if you have any reactions. I know this wasn't a tool that was available to you, but. As you listen to the presentation, if you have any thoughts or reactions, I'd love to hear them. We'd love to hear them. And I can also wait, but go ahead, Nathan.
Yeah, this, this whole thing seems amazing. I mean, I'm, I'm surprised by everything. It's, it's great. I, I'm only disappointed that I can't use it more as a senior. Yeah, um, so I wrote a little, a few notes while you were giving your presentation. So I appreciate the whole mood section. I thought that was really, uh, an interesting idea. It was uh, innovative almost. I hadn't seen something like that before. So, you know, being, and the tips especially. Uh, you know, giving people actions to do, I think, to, based on the mood. I thought that was really uh, amazing. Especially you said there's so many tips, like ten to fourteen per mood. And there's a amazing amount of moods too. So yeah, that was really interesting. Uh, also the ease of access to the resources, especially like the hotlines. I appreciated that. So that's another great point about it. Um, yeah, and I mean, it's just, there's, there's so much to it. It's crazy. This is, yeah, I'm amazed. I'll say that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm also very impressed. I also really liked the tips for the moods. I'd never seen that before. Um, and as well as like the hotlines, I think that's really important, um, to include. And I think it'll help keep a lot of people like on track and be able to organize things. Um, I guess my one concern would be like if it was required to use, because I know that sometimes like. Finding out how to like navigate things again. And if you're really busy with homework, sometimes if you have to set goals, it can feel like extra homework. But other than that, I think that it reminds me a little bit of Duolingo, which I've had to use in school before. So I think that having to navigate it won't be too much of a problem, because students are very used to, um, like apps like this. So I think that's really helpful.
Thank you. Comments from members of the board? Anyone? Director Bonbrite?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Zeke. I thought, uh, one word that comes to mind is cool. I really, it's just really awesome. Um, of course, I'm, it's way beyond me. So, um, but I, I did wanna actually piggyback on something Jasmine, um, was asking or was saying. That I actually had a question about how it interfaces or relates to the other, um, access, uh, systems that we have in place around grades. And, um, test scores and those kinds of things, because I, I was thinking exactly the same thing. Like, is this an either or? Can they do this? Can they track their homework on this instead of, I, I can't remember what the name of the other one that we use is. Schoology, okay. So Schoology versus, and so, you know, there, it's, it's double the work if you have to do it twice. And so I was trying to think that through. So Jasmine, thank you for articulating it.
So we're working, right now, we're pulling the grades piece out of our uh, e-school system. Um, but we are in the process of looking, pulling that from Schoology, so it's a perfect match. And the app actually sits in Schoology, so the students would see it as one of their resources, uh, while they're in that space. And so again, uh, I missed an assignment or I'm behind, uh, what do I need to do to set myself as a reminder? The next feature we're adding is a planner. Uh, it'll piggyback what's in Schoology as teachers populate it. But also gives the student that opportunity to go in and set a different reminder. So it's like, okay, I know next Thursday is this quiz. I know I need Tuesday to start on it, right? Um, so we're trying to leverage current platform of Schoology. As well as in essence, enhance. So it's not a required, you better do both. It's going back to my earlier statement, here's the tools you have to help you be successful.
So a student could go in and use just this tool, the compass tool, and never have to bother with the other one. But if they didn't want to use this tool, they could find their, their stuff on Zoology.
Correct. That's all right. We'll get you there.
It is a zoo.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
I mean, sorry, Vice President Bonbrite?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm just jodding.
Okay, Director Leon?
Thanks for the presentation. So, um, yeah, grades, um, you talked about how to check all those. Sometimes grades can be, you know, become overwhelming. Uh, if people are just focused on the grade. Um, the grade doesn't tell everything about a student. So I appreciate there's a lot of other things there that can give kids an idea of how they're doing, what they can do better. Is there a way that teachers can give ratings or feedback on like kids' knowledge base or their activity? I know that comes in grades sometimes, it's just interaction in class, uh, as opposed to like just the scores. Does that come separate or is that just kind of part of the grade? So, so, so a teacher could say, this kid is really pretty bright and maybe they had just a bad couple of weeks doing some assignments or something like that. So they don't get down on themselves too much. Is that, is this?
So there's a couple of pieces there. We, in a standards-driven instruction model. We don't see as much around the participation showing up in the grade book. Now, recognizing the student, giving that feedback is certainly critical. Uh, we know that offering schools that custom badge space is part of that. So, um, you know, I've heard at different schools, there, in fact, uh, librarians today. Uh, Stadium was asking some questions. You know, we have AP courses. So we know we've offered rigor, opportunities for kids. How do we recognize them for that effort? So it might not be Tuesday at ten o'clock, they receive that piece, but their effort over time shows up. Um, and then I think the others, one of the features we're looking at is the connections piece, so kind of a kids page. So I show you, there's like a resource page. Here's an academic for other academic. And then what's the kids page? How do we connect you with, uh, the after-school programs, the other opportunities, the clubs around town? The, there's so many different interest levels. So when I think of the student you're describing where, yeah, crushing these tests is not my jam. But my teacher recognizes other pieces and my teacher can help me through this space, connect with places that I'll excel.
We also were very intentional about trying to give success criteria that was already negotiated. With the idea that kids needed a safe place to see the gifts that they really are. Without somebody saying, you know, you're not there, right? They needed a safe place to say, I can go get this badge on my own. I can, I can improve my success on my own with resources, but I can set my own goals in there. So we wanted to create a safe space for them to, to not have too much adult comment. On what their goals, their successes are, um, with the idea that if we give them the data, the knowledge. They're gonna accelerate at a far greater rate.
Thanks. Um, what about, you, you mentioned the support section. Kids can reach out to teachers and other kids. Uh, so they reach out to other kids around like getting, just simple examples, getting help on homework or what club is going on? Can I join that club? And teachers say, thank you for helping on homework or, could it be anything?
Well, yeah, how we help you find a mentor, if that's a need you have for some ongoing support. That's the connections piece that, um, you know, having been a principal at middle school with after-school programs. One of the things that we really had to work on was bringing our partners in during the regular staff time. So the staff even knew what was available from flag football, the homework club, the choir, and you know, there's. Partnerships are amazing, but it takes an extra layer of communication. How can we fold that into here? So now every teacher doesn't have to be an expert on every single thing going on. Um, so we see tutoring clubs. We've really, through Avid especially, but even in our high schools with AP courses. Uh, talking with Justina Johnson, our director, how do we help kids build their, that study group, right? We did it in college because we had to. The reality set in. But we have to teach that skill. And kids, I mean, I've seen sixth graders pull it off, right? But it's something we have to create that space for.
Okay. And the mood part about, I think that's maybe one of those powerful parts here, is giving them the ability to interact. Get cues, make changes to their mood, they're positive. Um, you mentioned the part about there are links to. Uh, to, it wasn't, you need to use the word crisis line or hotlines, uh, that can be used. Some kids aren't gonna use those. So if there's too many blue zones or red zones, anger zones, is there something that alerts a staff? An adult member in the staff at the school to go maybe check in on that kid? If the, it's like a pattern that just continues to escalate.
So we spent a lot of time on that piece. Um, and there's no clear, I mean, we've met with school psychologists. We've met with, uh, the SMART Center at UW, which is the medical and academic. Um, and trying to figure out, is there, is there a calibration for that we should be looking for? Is there an obligation that we have from that? How do we make the data available to staff that supervise the kids? So there is a dashboard that counselors, teachers have that have that student on their roster or assigned to them, the administrators. And so they can monitor some of that piece. Uh, and one of the spaces we came to is kids are gonna be, um, all over the place. And at different times. And there's not an obligation that we're watching this Saturday night at one o'clock for a kid to mood in or anything of that nature. This is, uh, as Dr. Garcia described, it's their space to do their thing. But there are ways for us to see that. We've had some conversations on the data side of, do we need to trigger a piece and what would that look like? And the discovery is the same as it would be in school. So if we noticed the kid was having a rough day and we interacted with them, we would immediately set them up with supports they needed. And this is that same kind of discovery piece. When we come across it, we immediately react to it. But we don't have something that pings you right away based on a metric.
I'd probably advocate that that would be useful. Uh, I mean, you could tell probably a lot of the kids, we can tell, and teachers would be able to see that. But if there's a pattern, you know, no one's really monitoring this in the middle of the night, right? So we're not saying that, but if a pattern of a week, two weeks, three weeks goes by, where things are just worse, worse, worse. I think that would be a powerful thing to help some kids.
Certainly.
Thanks for talking.
Director Keating?
Um, I'm so excited, Zeke. This is cool. Uh, I think it was like two years ago when there was the Stewart documentary.
Yep.
When we were, you were walking us around Stewart and telling me, we're telling us all about this idea you had. And like, it was so hard to conceptualize it. And plus, you talk a mile a minute. And so like, you have to really work to keep up. And I just am like so excited and impressed to see this in its full form. From where, you know, when you first told me about it. It's so incredible. Um, one question I also, I mean, the mood pieces, uh, others have also said super powerful, but, and. Um, I'm curious about, because one of the things that I, through ELO programming that I've done with elementary school students. Really focused on that there are multiple emotions that can happen at the same time. And helping kids connect that, right? It's not just a singular emotion. It's not just, I am sad, right? Like, uh, you know, you can be nervous, excited and scared, right? And, and, and so I'm curious, and this may make somebody else, you make somebody else's hair go grayer or I don't know what. But I'm just curious about, like, that educational piece. Is you are looking to develop the younger, um, interface. Helping our younger students also explore the complexities that emotions aren't, you don't, you know, that a lot of motions can, emotions can feed each other. So I'd just be super curious about, you know, not right now, but just in seeing an evolution of using the mood piece. As a way to help students become more emotionally intelligent at young, younger ages.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, but this is amazing. So I'll stop there.
I know.
Thank you. Director Strozer?
Uh, thanks for the presentation. I, I'm liking what I'm seeing. I can see my kid, um, kind of messing around with this, so that's, that's pretty cool. I will ask though, what, can you speak to the student rollout plan? Like, is this something that's just gonna pop up for them to see? And then they're asking what this is, or, uh, they're gonna get some guidance on it?
So all of the above. We actually, um, when we started digging into this, we found districts that had some pieces. They had a mood piece, or they had a grade and a goal piece, or they had a badge piece. Um, but we didn't find anybody that had all of them. And what we did find is in Austin, in San Jose, uh, we, Canada, we talked to a group in Australia. A lot of them did kind of a viral start. Uh, San Jose, for example, they literally just put it on their public page and they said nothing. And then at the end of week two, there were like eighteen hundred kids. And theirs was just for high school students, right? And it was just the badges and the grades, right? And it was just the badges and the grades, right? So we thought during our pilot, we, we experimented a little of each. Couple of teachers, here it is, we're not gonna say a whole lot, a couple of others are gonna come in, we're gonna model it and go through. And we definitely saw an engagement difference in that. So our first goal is to just get it in, get it running and live, uh, which we were able to pull off this week. We've been meeting with, uh, counselors and librarians and different groups over the last couple of weeks and kind of modeling it for them. We built out a website in our hub for them to access, uh, with little videos, even a student, uh, trailer video, so it's got kids in there. I apologize, it's my kids, but the only ones I could get near during COVID, so, uh, I have three of them in Tacoma, so they walked through kind of using it. Um, and then there's an overview that more technical welcomes is where you start in. So we've tried to provide teachers easy resources, kid-friendly language. Um, we're currently working on a space where they can model it, so in their Basecamp app, they'd be able to go in and say, alright, class, today we're working on goal setting, I'm gonna walk you through lockstep. Um, but we're not driving that next Thursday at two o'clock, everybody in seventh grade needs to be doing this lesson on compass. Um, it's really just a resource we wanted to put in kids' hands and support that process. So I've had a couple of teachers email already, alright, I was in here, I was doing this piece, what about, can we? It's like absolutely, including that student feedback piece. Um, so it was great to hear from our two students today, but we'll be going back out. So we've been picking on Stewart and Jason Lee and Truman, uh, we'll kind of work our way around schools, their voice is, is key.
Any other questions? I just have two, just following up on this piece about the rollout. I'm just thinking about recent launches of apps in the world, and like Clubhouse is a big one, like, and you thought, what is this thing? Because invitations were going around, do students have the opportunity to invite others to join? Is there any way to build that capability and not that?
So one of the features, so like I said, we've got our kind of half dozen we're in now. We've got another, I think, uh, probably seven or eight that we're still gonna continue to work on over the next couple of years. Um, but one has been that notification. So we know for so many kids, their support is not that direct staff person, it's their coach, it's, uh, their auntie, grand, right? Like whoever that is, and so how do we help them push that out? I, you know, and, and again, it's success driven. So if you had a point four GPA and you got to a point nine and you made a point five jump, I'm giving you a badge. Like you went up, like we're just gonna start there. You were, uh, low on an assessment, you went up, I'm gonna get you a badge. And so how do they send that out to those supports that they have that? And that can include their teacher, we heard a lot of students talking about last year's teacher, right? Like I had this teacher last year and, man, she got on me and I, you know, I turned the corner. So how do I now show her this is where I'm at? This is what I'm doing, right? And that was really powerful here from kids, so we know we need to build that mechanism in.
Yeah, thank you. Um, following up to you on Director Leon's question about intervening related to the mood trends.
Sure.
One of the things that we heard, I think several of us heard in our listening sessions last, long time ago, before COVID. Last March with students, especially middle school students, was that when I'm having a bad day, I just need to take a break or like to just have a place to go. So in lieu of like having a metric that we can pull from some other kind of validated resource about when is the right time? Is there an intermediate opportunity to build something in that based on a student's mood lets them ask for? You know, like ask for time or ask, like the, the tips are great and it points in the direction of things that they can do. But if, as some of the students consistently said, I just need to be able to like go to a quiet place for a second. Is that, is there any kind of signaling to a teacher or to a counselor that the students can do from the system?
So part of it is, uh, and I'll go to Director Keating's statement, it's part of that education piece, right? So we know, especially in our elementaries, we're seeing, uh, really clear explicit SEL instruction. Our middle schools are getting better at that piece, we saw a lot this year, even with our virtual realities. And so how do we help the kid with that voice? So certainly we could look at putting in a digital mechanism, but there's a lot of power and
Yep.
me being twelve and being able to approach an adult and this is where I'm at, this is how I'm feeling, this is my need. And I'm still gonna come back and do my fractions, cause of course that's why I woke up this morning, right? Said, no whatever, so. Part of it is that experience, but we certainly could look at, does this directly signal, you know, without a disruptive piece, right?
Yeah, and I think from the experience and the conversations, it seemed that some of the schools had a mechanism like built into their culture and into the school environment, like kids knew that they could go ask so and so. Whereas in others, it's like it was the sense that they still needed it. So regardless of what the technology does or doesn't enable, I, I think that the school has to support
Sure.
that practice too, but I was just curious about like the two-way, if there's two-way communication. My last question is about, um, the, first blacking out, this is great, I went right into my questions, but this is great. Um, my last question is about the data and what students see. I just wonder what the kind of behavioral science research says about whether seeing your own place in your own grades compared to your peers? If that's motivating or if it's, um, can be, um, well, the opposite of motivated in some cases? And if there is research around that, I'm wondering if that varies depending on like culture or gender identity? Like how does that motivate or potentially, um, not inhibit students kind of thinking about their own abilities and their own sense of efficacy and all that stuff? What, what's the research say about that?
So for me, that homework started, oh my gosh, sixteen years ago, as an elementary principal, um, I was at Fawcett, uh, I will take full credit, my first year I managed to drive us into the tank. Uh, and so we were getting the notice from the state, like you better pick it up. And that was one of my curiosities is what does that look like? So I had a chance to go and just start asking questions, um, I had met even with pediatricians and psychologists, uh, I was reading. And I couldn't find anything that said, no, they shouldn't see their data. I also couldn't find anything that said, absolutely, they'll flourish, it'll be amazing. And so I just started slow dosing it out with kids and I was creating these, you know, this is back in good old mail merge days, these crazy documents with like, you read this many words correct on your DIBELS? And if you can get this far by January or June, and kids were setting their goals, teachers were facilitating those conversations. And kids took on to it. I've had kids in my office with, uh, if you actually go into East School, it'll tell you how you rank. So we have a couple hundred kids per grade level at a typical middle school. And I'd have, you know, a kiddo in there who's like two twelve out of two twenty on the list. And even that kid would be like, ooh, that's bad, I gotta do something about that, right? So even my kids at the lowest end of the scale, the kids that I'd sit down with and say, you're a low level one on this test. And we're gonna take this test again in three, four months and you've got multiple opportunities to get smarter, to challenge yourself, what do you wanna do? And so I've seen these kids writing goals around this, um, and I've tried to continue to stay abreast to what that looks like. Our conversations at the SMART Center were the same thing, uh, we've got education folks, medical folks around the table. And it's like, we don't have anything that says no. But we definitely have seen places where it's been successful, and so that's the space we're gonna play in.
I think the other thing, that, none of this, this is supposed to be a perfect, uh, isolated piece, right? So schools and school staff are working through their cap plans, grade level teams, they're working with kids to improve their pieces. Uh, this is designed to say, you know, as a student, you have the ability to own your own data as well. And to not keep them from there. But President Kopp, you're hitting on an important point is, we've got to surround kids with the adults to help them get there. There are some tips, right, that we're gonna continue to build out around, so if you do have low grades, what are there? What are the learning strategies? So Justina and, and Zeke, what are the high-yield learning strategies? How do we teach kids on their own through Schoology how to take notes? How to use a graphic organizer, so really practical strategies that they can then own to say, I can improve this. Um, but this is a part of a bigger suite of information and supports for kids, not the only one. Because I think then it's really dangerous if we're not having conversations with kids about some of the topics that you've had. Um, so, um, counselors are also having conversations, there is schools that are, uh, all of our elementaries are doing, um, explicit curriculum around SEL. I think you, you've already brought up was, so what does secondary explicit curriculum look like? Um, you've brought in the idea that every school needs a social emotional learning plan. So that's another tool in the suite to say, how are we looking at kids? But the premise here is, is that in a lot of that work, we had left the student out. And we needed to bring something where the student was in to say, I'm really the captain of my own ship. Uh, give me the knowledge, give me the tips. And what we're finding even in the COVID world is some kids are going faster. And how do we use this as one more piece?
Yeah, I appreciate that context, I think I'm just asking, my mind thinks in terms of research and research questions. And with this data too, I'm just curious and I recognize this is like a research question, like the intersection or the interaction between students' moods and seeing these, these data? Like if on a day or a consistent set of three days, a student is like sad, anxious and something else. And then they see that they're performing below average for students in their school and in the district, what does that do? Kind of to mindset motivation, so I think all this is great, but, uh, just in rolling out new things, I think it's, um, um, it's just good to probe on these things so that you don't embed potentially negative, um, additions into the system and that you leverage kind of the things that do really work. So I'm just asking, curious about it and hope maybe we can continue to wrap kind of exploration around those dynamics into the rollout of the system.
Even in our pilot, the student feedback piece has been dynamite, kids are just gonna tell you, right? So even as we're sitting reading, it's like, alright, take a big gulp and here we go. And so we've heard feedback pieces around, this is my favorite part, I would never use this part, right? And so then how do we dig into that, what's missing, is it a tweak, is it a total revamp? Um, so we'll continue that as well.
Thank you.
And not making this mandatory, right? That this is not, it was never designed to be a, a classroom assignment. And if you're not doing it so much, this was designed to be a tool to help kids perform better inside the classroom and outside the classroom. So this is not a mandatory piece and we're not positioning it to be that way.
Thank you.
And I just, on, on one note, I really, the part I forgot to mention, I really like the interest piece as well, as well as the mood. But I think the interest piece is where the, a lot of kids are gonna shine. I mean, they might not have had a, been exposed to travel or they might not have been exposed to something else. And going to the library or, you know, looking online is different. This is, you know, it's, it's a, they can go on a personal journey through this app and be interested in something and then get tips and, and information on how to actually operationalize that desire. So I really, I really think that could be so powerful, so well done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thanks for the presentation. I have to say, when, um, Dr. Garcia first told me about it, all, I mean, the term badge, all I kept seeing was Girl Scout badges in my mind. So it's nice to see the system come to life.
Those are good badges, so, uh, in ways that we're gonna keep on working to incorporate Girl Scout badges.
Good. Alright, moving on to number fifteen, board comments and reports. I'll start with our student board members, um, Ms. Pearson, any report tonight? Mr. Esman, any report, great.
So I, I wanted to give some feedback on just like the, how the going back to school in-person process has been going.
Thank you.
Um, and so I, I went back last Monday and so far I'm, I've really enjoyed being back in school. I think that, um, first of all, it's safe, which is the best part. And it's also efficient getting in, you know, checking in, um, on the family app and having them see it, so everything is great there. And it's just great like being able to talk to my teachers in person and talk to, you know, my, my peers and I guess just learning in person, it feels, it feels better, I think, in my opinion, and I hope other people feel that way too. And so I, I, I think it's, I feel more engaged, I think, in class, which is, uh, great, so. Yeah, that's how I've been feeling about that, um, let's see. Oh, also, yeah, and like the whole mental health aspect of it, I think is, a lot of people are feeling better overall so far, just for the few first, you know, couple of days of, of it, I think people are already, um, enjoying being, being back in school too and it's helping kind of their overall state, so, yeah. Um, and then just kind of a check in on sports too, which I like to give. The first season I think ended well and second season's already great too, everything's pretty much the same there, so, you know, safety. Um, and just kind of how information is being given out to people. It's a little confusing on some, you know, like, uh, I think the location was changed for the upcoming track meet a couple of times, so there's a little bit of confusion there, but, you know, that's, it's a minor problem, so it's okay. Um, and then also I just wanna thank Dr. Garcia for his words earlier, um, they were, yeah, that was great, alright.
Thank you, Nathan. Ms. Pearson, any report? No pressure, just wanna make sure we, just don't wanna skip over you.
Uh, yeah, so I also went back to school, um, and this week has been like all four grades at my high school. Um, and so that's been really refreshing, cause it was kind of weird to be honest when it was just seniors, cause I was in a class with like two other people and we're like, we don't really know what to do. Um, but it was also nice to just catch up with teachers, um, and yeah, I agree with Nathan, it's been easier to communicate with teachers. I was in my AP Calculus class and I am, calculus is not typically my strong suit, um, but it was really hard to get one-on-one time with teachers and ask those questions. But today while I was taking like a test, I was able to call over my teacher and be like, hey, does this work look right? Um, and that was just really reassuring and kind of refreshing as well. Um, and on a more restorative justice, um, point, uh, we have a restorative justice club at my school with a lot of teachers and students and, uh, they put together a microaggression lesson, uh, which I think is really important because now that people are back in school, there's more interactions between students that, you know, can't can't always be monitored by teachers, like when you're in a virtual breakout room or, uh, in the chat. And so I think it's really important to have students not only readjust to being in the classroom, but also just readjust to the school culture and learning how to like respect everyone. Um, and so I think that's been a really important piece as well.
Thank you. Um, comments and reports from the board, I'll start with Vice President Bonbreak.
Okay, well, this has gone long, so I will be super brief. Um, just to say that last meeting, the next day we were gonna have our JMAC, the Joint Municipal Action Count Committee meeting, um, about the visioning project that we're doing within our community. And, um, it was a two-hour workshop and it was fantastic. There was a lot of participation and engagement of the elected officials that were there and the executives of each of the, the agencies that were involved. And, um, we came out of it with a visual capture, um, someone drew pictures of the discussion. And I don't know if you've ever seen that, there was sort of a, a graphic capture of the minutes, if you will, of the conversation. And, um, so that was very powerful and we're about to step in the, the next step of the project, which is we're doing a, um, it's called a reinforced scorecard, um, to evaluate our innovation and, um, scale and also the, um, the ability for our community to work together, uh, on the three major issues, which are Jedi, which is justice, equity, um, diversity and inclusion is one. And then the other, the next one is, um, public health and safety and the last one is building community wealth. And those are the three tracks that we're taking through this whole JMAC project over the next six months. And so we're about to go assess our, uh, the community's ability and innovation's, um, capacity to move the needle on these three topics. And so that's gonna be discussed at the April ninth meeting, so I will give you, uh, an update at that point. But just to let you know that there's, um, it's exciting, it's engaging and, uh, it's really stimulating to know that all the partnerships we talked about tonight that TPS is involved in, they're only getting stronger through this work, so, thank you.
Thank you. Director Leon, any report tonight?
Yeah. Check in Dave here. Um, so I was able to, uh, visit, uh, Basin and Truman Middle Schools last week. Really, um, exciting, um, visit, just seeing kids and teachers interact, um, for the sixth graders when they were there. There was so much excitement from the kids, they were being safe, they were, um, really, um, thoughtful in their comments about how much they miss school, really, I mean, it was one kid who was like eh, out of like twenty-some kids that I talked to. So I thought that was pretty good, you know, excitement to be back in school. And really, um, teacher morale, kid morale, um, was very high. It seemed like I wanted to talk to teachers individually, not just with the principals by my side, although I do appreciate Mr. Arling, Mr. Stoutler, great hosts during their visits. So, um, uh, many teachers' classrooms have, are visited, uh, specifically just, um, uh, the, the protocol around safety, the nurses, um, and talked with this, uh, Ms. Jackson, um, Ms. Badwell of both schools and to see the layout of what would happen if a kid were to be sick and how they'd be isolated. Uh, it's been very thoughtfully done in, in. Uh, this has been very softly, um, so implemented there at both those schools and as, as I'm, uh, I'm sure it's been at other schools too. Uh, HVAC, uh, we talked about HVAC and air exchanges. Those are all, uh, um. Appropriate for, for both those schools and really everywhere. At this point, there's some of the schools that are using Windows. Uh, but of course, um, air transfers are really important. Um. The music's, uh, a program, um, you know, is still going and people have been doing it, of course, remotely. But, uh, we still need to get some PPE for wind instruments. I think hopefully those are coming in soon. I heard they were on their way. Uh, so they can actually start to be performed together in spaces that are, that are safe. So I think, uh, the arts are really something that's, you know, taking a hit. Uh, there's a lot of things happen. I like, we're excited to get that back going. Um, other things, uh, Truman also, the morale was extremely high. Ms. Lee in Science, Ms. Lewis in Language Arts, thank you for letting me visit your classes. Um, and, uh, also Safe Streets, I'll just mention I'm on the board there. There's an auction. May ninth, if anybody gets an invite, please, uh, May nineteenth, excuse me, no, nineteenth, yes. One to twelve, please, uh, try to come. You'll, a few of you make it invites from me. And then, um, I was, uh, there's a school physical, um, fair. That we're doing with my residents and my faculty, Lincoln. And Mount Tahoma, April, um, eighth in the afternoon. And then there was an exciting, uh, Lincoln football game, uh, last game that was, uh, against Lakes. I was there helping out the injuries. And, uh, I'll just give it a quick turn, turnaround. Basically it was, they had to drive, they were down by seven. They had to drive ninety-five yards in three minutes. They did that, uh, scored, and then it was go for two to win the game and they did it. So, good job, Lincoln.
Thank you. Director Keating?
Um, I'll keep it short. Um, so I don't have like any real WASDA updates or anything. Um, but last night, so for a little bit of context about five, it's been more than five years ago, I started as a, um. LGBTQ, um, advocate, uh, youth and family advocate. I started working with just a couple school counselors. Um, on, you know, who wanted to learn how to create more safe inclusive spaces. Um, specifically even more at the elementary school level. And over time, it has, um, evolved into an entire team. Um, of counselors, Tacoma, um, public schools counselors from elementary, middle and high school. And last night, um. We, and we've presented, um, and as a, I participate, um, as a community partner, um, with them. And we've presented at WASDA, we've presented at the, oh, I don't know the acronyms, but the School Counselor. National or state conference, whatever that is, sorry, team if I'm screwing that up. But last night. Um, because of one of these presentations, our team was invited to present to the UPS. Um, master's teaching and masters, um, masters in counseling programs last night to students and faculty. Um, and of course over Zoom. And it was really dynamic. And of course, doing any kind of training over Zoom is weird. It's just, everything is kind of weird over Zoom. But I just, like, it was really inspiring and I just, um, continue. Like as a community partner in this, in that specific work, I have no doubt that I could never be a part of that team again. And they would excel with just, um, with integrity and, and with students', um, safety at the core front. Student and staff. I wanna include LGBTQ staff as well. Um, and it was just really inspiring. To be with, working with them again, cause the last time we did it, I think was June, any kind of training, just because of COVID. And we received some feedback from the, um, faculty around, um, what the students said and, or, you know. Faculty and students said that the training was formidable, inspiring, authentic and dedicated professionals. And that the students were electrified. And I just am so proud because when I talk to people in other districts and across the country and other families. Count, like this kind of intentional work is, equity work is not being done to this level. And our school, our school counselors, I know I talk about them almost every single time we're on a dais. But they are doing such life-saving, incredible work. And I am so proud of this LGBTQ PLC team. That Laura, Director Whole Child, um, Laura Allen is helping, um, lead. So I just wanna give them, um. Just the, the highest accolades for their effort.
Thank you. Director Strozer?
No report.
Thank you. Um, I just, uh, be, between now and our previous, um, last meeting, I had the opportunity to sit. With members of the Foundation for Tacoma Students Board. Superintendent Santanil is also on that call. So it's just, um, always good to hear about the continued good work that the foundation is planning for and trying to lead. We have a really strong partner in that organization. And as they continue to mature and to find their way as an organization. It's been interesting to hear the conversation between members about continuing to implement the vision. And figuring out ways to be sustainable in the community. So I think we just have great partnership, as I've said, but also leadership in that organization. Um, in addition, I went to the Head Start Policy Council meeting. That's always my favorite. It's just nice to hear. Um, the fa, um, families and parents of like our, um, early learners. In action and working on moving the program and policy structure forward. I, um, always try to bring back just feedback from the group. There isn't a ton, I think, to share from this previous meeting. But in general, I think they appreciate having more of an open dialogue between us and the board and the opportunity for them to come and present. So just hope to keep that moving forward. Um, I think that's it for me tonight. So I'll move on to item number sixteen, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, April first, we'll meet for our regular business meeting at six PM. Thursday, April fifteenth, we'll meet at six PM for a study session. Thursday, April twenty-second, we'll meet at six PM for our regular business meeting. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, with that, we are adjourned.